The pledges, we have Bishop Charles Richardson, Sr., here from Calvary Baptist Church, I believe, as going to lead us in our invocation. I do it when I check in. I do it twice always, so do I need to do it now? 9:04. Is Bishop, please. Sorry.
Thank you for the invitation to come and pray today. Shall we pray? Dear heavenly Father, today as we pray, I pray for our county judges, our commissioners, our county, our city, and for all of your citizens. Keep giving them the wisdom to lead our county, the compassion to build up all of your children, and the help and encouragement that will bring about lasting improvement for the people of our county who are struggling. Help them to leave a great legacy in Oasis County for the next generation to continue to build on. Help our commissioners to plan their work and work their plan that will benefit everyone in the county in love and peace, unity, and harmony. Guide our commissioners as they guide our county. Bless every commissioner, every judge, every county judge, and bless their staff, and above all, bless their families. I lift up every agenda item that is under consideration today. I pray for every item on the docket today that you will allow it to come to a peaceful and helpful revolution that will benefit all of your people. I pray that this agenda will be in conjunction with your agenda, and all of the officials of the county will work diligently so that they can leave Oasis County in a better place than when they found it. I pray, Master, that you bless us now and that we will leave this place in love and not in hate, in unity and not in division, and leave it as a place of great opportunity. Please resolve all of the potential conflicts and let it be helpful to all of your citizens that we can continue to live in love and unity. I offer this prayer up now in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as a moral. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one unity indivisible.
Thank you. You may all be seated. Today is Wednesday, July 26. We have a quorum of members in the court. Commissioner Modas is on his way, and Commissioner Gonzalez is in his office. He'll be stepping in in just a second. He must be dealing with an issue or something. The location is in Oasis County Courthouse, 901 Leopard, and I will certify that we have a quorum and we can conduct business. Moving on to item D, if there are any announcements on conflicts of interest. If you will show, please, both of the commissioners joining us. If there is any conflict of interest, you can also state so if it comes back up. So I encourage you to do so if you fail to. And the item E, we just have a introduction of the new chief executive officer of the Corpus Christi RTA, Mr. Derek Majak. We're happy to have you here. We'll give you a couple of minutes to... I know you've been here. I know most of us know you, but thank you, and we're excited for your leadership over there.
Thank you for the court's time. Now, I just wanted to make sure I got to introduce myself. Some of you may not know me too well. I am a U.S. Navy veteran and an Iraq veteran where I served as a Navy CB. I started my career in public transit as a bus mechanic in Fort Worth in 2006 and worked my way up. And then I moved to Corpus Christi in 2017 where I became the Director of Transportation. And then I was recently afforded the opportunity by our board to serve this community as the CEO of the RTA. Now, I earned my bachelor's degree from A&amp;M Corpus Christi, so Go Islanders in 2018, and recently received my master's degree from Tarleton State, Justice last May. So, over the last six years, I've had the great privilege of building many positive working relationships with the county staff through everyday challenges and, of course, several of the natural disasters and things like that that we've had. I look forward to continuing building on those relationships and working with this Commissioners' Court and expanding those relationships as we work to benefit our community and our local regional economy. My focus is going to be on increasing and improving our communication, coordination, and involvement with our community partners, being the county, the small cities, and our other partners, being ambitious, innovative, and progressive with the projects we deliver and our use of technology, increasing ridership through a restoration of our previous levels of service before the pandemic, and, most importantly, ensuring we are providing safe and reliable services and facilities to our customers and community. So, with that, I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions or comments, I'm available.
We appreciate you being here today. Does anyone want to comment?
Congratulations and welcome to Oasis County.
Thank you, commissioners.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Moving on to certificates of recognition, item number one, recognition of Idalia G. Harvey's 26 years of service to Oasis County. That is pretty awesome. I'm sorry I don't know who you are if you're here. If you would please... I couldn't see. Thank you. Thank you. We have this... Is someone going to... Or would you like to come forward and say anything? And we have this for you, and we have a watch. And our county employees and the years of service you have dedicated to this courthouse and your work, I heard nothing but excellent things about you and very happy to have you.
Did you want to say something to him?
Do you want to say something? You need to be at the microphone. And if you want a picture, we'll all come down or come back and do a photo with you.
I've been here for 26 years. I started back in 1996. I've worked with the District Clerk's Office. It's been a pleasure working for the District Clerk's Office. I've learned a lot. I've had great people that I've met along the years, and I've had excellent head managers, I mean, you know, district clerk. And Ms. Ann is a wonderful person, and I'm very pleased to be in her department as a supervisor for the 4D section. And also Ms. Lillian Gutierrez, she's been a wonderful person, always there to listen. And I thank every one of you for giving me the opportunity to be here today.
Ms. Ann and Lillian, if y'all want to say anything. Do you want to say something? Yes.
I didn't know Idalia until I became district clerk, but she has turned out to be one of the best people that I have, one of a lot of best people that I have in my office. But I think the one thing that I appreciate the most from Idalia is not only her friendship over these years, but the loyalty that she has shown to me also as district clerk. That's... Those are two valuable assets that any of us as an elected official could get from their staff. And so, I very much appreciate Idalia, all the hard work. She's a very hard worker. I never really had to worry about her department at all because we had a great line of communication, and I appreciated that as well. I hate to see her go. It's going to be a change for both of us, but again, I just want to let her know how much I appreciate her, and I know that she'll have a great new beginning as she leaves the county. I know her and her husband have great plans. I see him over there, Mr. Harvey. And so, I wish them everything, and God bless you both. Thank you.
We all do as well as a court. Thank you for your service.
Would you like to come forward? Do you want to come down? Or are you going to stay up?
Congratulations. Thank you.
And next up, item two, and recognition of Joanne Beltran, 16 years of service for Oasis County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Joanne Beltran, and I've been with Oasis County for 16 years, nine months, and four... Who's counting? I started in 2006 with the auditor's office for about six years, and I had a great time there. And then I transferred over to the District Clerk's Office in 2012, and I've been there ever since. And it was a good, good time being there. It was a... I worked in the criminal section, the probate section, you know, and then I ended up staying at the child support section, the 4D section. This is my supervisor, Idalia, you know, all those years.
Wow, those of y'all leaving.
Yes. Yeah, so it was good.
Good.
And so, now I guess it's on to my next chapter of my life, I guess. Thank you.
We wish you the very best. We have this for you too, if you want to take a picture.
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Hold on. Here, can you see him? You good?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Judge, Ms. Beltran and I went to high school together, so that's what... Yeah, exactly. Right. She was a lot younger than me, though.
I believe that.
The next item on the agenda is adopt the following resolution, August being Health Awareness Month proclamation. I'd like to get a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. And Peyton, if you will read that for us, please.
Sure thing, of course. Whereas Health Awareness Month aspires to create heightened focus on the importance of personal health and well-being of individuals and families across our community, whereas by dedicating the month of August to health awareness, we can collectively promote education, encourage healthy lifestyle choices, and motivate individuals to prioritize their health. Whereas, along with Health Awareness Month, there will be a community-wide health fair 2023 on September 2, 2023, at the American Bank Center from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., where all attendees will receive three free medical screenings, testing, and comprehensive health information so that they can make informed decisions for themselves and their families. And whereas, by declaring August as Health Awareness Month, we signal our dedication to the health and prosperity of our Oasis County communities and hopefully inspire residents to take charge of their health and well-being and create positive lifestyle changes for the future. Now therefore, be resolved by the Commissioners' Court of Oasis County, do hereby proclaim August 2023 as Health Awareness Month. We encourage all Oasis County residents to attend the Health Fair 2023. Together, we can help create a healthier and stronger Oasis County, duly adopted by the vote of the Commissioners' Court of Oasis County, Texas, on this 26th day of July 2023.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, they can sign. The motion passes.
I bet.
Just double motion it.
Y'all had already done that part. Moving on to public comment, we have some people who have signed up for public comment. When I call you up, there is a time limit. You're limited to three minutes, in case you aren't aware. I know we have some students, and I think they've been made aware, but we can't respond to you or anything, but we can listen to what you're saying. So, when you get to the podium, please state your name and address, though. And number one up is Richard Wright.
Morning, all. How are y'all doing today?
Good morning.
I won't take three minutes. My name is Richard Wright. I'm superintendent of Awadoussi ISD, and I just came to thank y'all. I know y'all don't give much praise, and so I came to thank y'all for the $90,000 that you gave us for safety. I know that Commissioner Hernandez spearheaded that, and then the court voted on that, but it's going to be very beneficial to our school district so that we might be able to get some more stuff going for the student safety and everything else on our campus. And I just thank you for the work that you're doing. We're out there on the West End and kind of sometimes have to fight it by ourselves, but anytime we pick up telephone and ask for something, Commissioner Hernandez of the court is always very, very good about getting back with us. So, we appreciate 110%. I know we've worked with Commissioner Marias as well, and just want to say thank you from Awadoussi ISD.
Thank you.
And I've also brought you pins that are made from authentic Oasis County mesquite wood, as far as you know. So, may I approach, Judge?
Yes, please.
Yeah, hold... Don't hold me to that.
That's a bit hard one for you to get because it's not quite London.
That's all right, man. We're good. I'll take it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's nice. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank y'all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Get out of your hair and let these young ladies come up here and do their thing.
That's right.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Next up, we have Dr. Nancy Vera.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dr. Nancy Vera. I'm the proud president of the award-winning Corpus Christi American Federation of Teachers, and we're so excited to be here today because you're going to see the fruit of our wonderful future here today, speaking to you. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that we are in partnership with the West Oso Independent School District, and we are very appreciative to the superintendent and her staff for being so supportive of their students. I'd also like to thank Judge Ina Klein and Jenny, County Attorney Jenny Dorsey, for helping us out and helping spur this up. Actually, it was County Attorney Jenny Dorsey's idea to actually put this youth governance academy together, and so we're very excited to be here today. As we move on, you're going to hear young ladies who have taken their time out of their summer, and their busy summer, to come and learn speaking skills, a little bit about the jailhouse with Sheriff Hooper, a little bit about the Commissioners' Court. Judge, you came and spoke to them the other day, and we had other judges come and speak to them. So, this is going to be the... And we're going to bring them back one day, and we're going to see how they're doing, maybe as adults. Maybe they'll be serving as commissioners then. What do you think, Commissioner Modas? I think so.
That sounds good.
All right. All right. So, I'm going to sit down now and let them speak. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
First up is it Fallon Morales? Is it... Did I say that wrong?
Cailene.
Cailene?
Cailene.
Cailene, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Judge Scott and commissioners. I'm Cailene Morales, 138 Green Point Drive. I'm a senior at West Oso, or going to be a senior. I just would like to thank you for taking your time out of your day and listening to what we have to say. Today, I would like to talk about Texas, the Texas heat and our lack of local events to combat it. We know we cannot change the weather, but why not come up with funding and innovative ways to live through it? Heat is the leading cause of weather-related death. According to the Texas Health Department, 366 people died last year from Texas heat alone. How is this happening in today's times, and what can we do in our county to avoid such unfortunate preventable incidents from occurring? I would like to propose hosting more city-wide events centered on water activities during the months of June and July, or provide lower cost or fee admissions on certain days and at certain water centers. Like the view, the new HEB splash pad where tickets cost 30 for children ages 3 to 12 and 40 for those 13 and older. Not everyone can afford those prices, especially larger families, and despite there being smaller splash pads around the town that are free, overcrowding is an issue. By working with different organizations or the city council coming up with summertime events for the city of Corpus Christi and surrounding areas can foster a sense of community and allow those less fortunate, along with our families and our youth, to combat the Texas heat together. I would also like to add that I am excited for the completion of the aquatic sensor coming to Corpus Christi, Bill Witt Park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eliza Villarreal.
Good morning, Judge Scott and commissioners. My name is Eliza Villarreal, and I'm a junior at West Oso High School. And I want to thank you for allowing me to come before you today and address an issue that I have in our community. According to many articles, the unemployment rate has decreased slightly, but it is still an ongoing issue. We, as a community, need to come together to help those who are still struggling. With organizations like Texas Workforce Commission, we should be advertising their resources and help to bolster the teams and others like them. By investing in more education and training programs, it would allow for citizens to get a higher education and even get certified to enhance their possibility of finding a job. This will bring many benefits, not only for the person, but for our community as well, by creating a more skilled and knowledgeable workforce. And so, although unemployment may never fully come to an end, it is our responsibility to ensure these citizens of our community are given the opportunity to better themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Johnson.
Good morning, Judge Scott and commissioners. I would like to thank you all and Corpus Christi American Federation of Teachers for helping us out with this program and providing us with this opportunity. I have learned a lot, and everything that you have taught... You all have taught me I can take with me to my future. My name is Teresa Johnson, and I am a sophomore at West Oso High School. Today, I would like to talk about homeless... The homeless population in Oasis County. Everywhere I go, I come across at least one homeless person. The Oasis County population is at 353,000 as of this year, making it the 16th most populous county in the state. However, 600 to 800 of these people are homeless. Compared to other cities in Texas, this may seem a little like a very small number, but why not try to reduce it even further? Some people may ask, why don't they get jobs? Well, it's not that easy. Some disabilities can be seen, cannot be seen, and everyone has a story of why they're where they are. I would want our homeless to not only have a home and address, but also have a job so they can afford them, they can support themselves. For most jobs, an address is required, but of course, they don't have one or the money to get a place to stay, which keeps them on a vicious cycle. I would like to suggest creating an organization or volunteer group that gets people in our county, on the streets, to speak with these people or perhaps mentor them as well. Provide mental health resources and counseling. This organization is a group of people... This organization or group of people would bring the community closer and create a unified city, and ideally, I think, having 16-year-olds or college students be a part of this something, this thing would be amazing. Thank you for your time and consideration with this matter.
Thank you, ma'am. Raquel Vella.
Good morning. I want to thank Judge Scott and all the commissioners for having me here today.
Can you state your name and address first? I'll just cut you before we get too far.
Yes. My name is Raquel Vella and 4450 Carlton Street. And I am a junior at West Oso High School, and today I would like to speak on the issue of family violence in our... within our county. Despite the percentage of overall crimes decreasing, the percentage of family and domestic violence cases are rising daily. Domestic violence is more than just physical or sexual violence, and both women and men can be victims. Around 120 people a week are hospitalized due to domestic and family violence. Currently, the CCPD has a Victims Assistance Program, which offers assistance to victims and also educates the community on domestic violence and victimized issues. However, as a junior in high school, I believe it would be beneficial to have CCPD personnel as well as officials from the county attorney's office to speak at local and surrounding area high schools and colleges on the resources available to those who may be experiencing domestic violence. I also suggest that funding should be provided and conversations held about building more domestic violence shelters in our county, as many are unable to seek shelter due to capacity being met. Thank you for your... Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Barnes.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ariana Barnes, 1802 Darcy. I'm an upcoming junior at West Oso High School. Today, I'm going to talk about how some parks in our city and Oasis County need to be renovated. Our city, Corpus Christi, and Oasis County are continuing to expand the population. There are so many young families and young youth that struggle to find a safe and clean recreational space to entertain themselves. There are so many parks that have just metal slides and monkey bars and swings that are rusted and falling apart and have lack of shade. I find it important that I promote engaging outdoor activities, but when many parks throughout our city are unkept with and neglected, it does not incentivize younger generations to get out there and play. I hope that our parks and recreation department serves on more to maintain and improve our... improve upon our parks, especially funds that located from the 125 million bond in 2022 program that are provided by the Corpus Christi residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Victoria Vella.
Good morning, Judge Scott and fellow commissioners. I'm Victoria Vella, 901 South Navigation Boulevard, and I'm a junior at West Oso High School. Thank you for allowing me to join you and talking about what I want to see changed in the city of Corpus Christi. Corpus Christi is a beautiful city with much potential, but we need to focus on downtown development in order to take it to the next level. By investing more in our downtown area, we can create a thriving community that will attract new businesses, residents, and visitors. This means investing in infrastructure, public transportation, and community spaces. By improving the roads, sidewalks, and public transportation options, we can make downtown more accessible to everyone. Additionally, we can attract new businesses and residents by downtown by offering incentives and tax breaks. Although there are many factors that are preventing... that are preventing the bettering of downtown, such as lack of funding and competing priorities. For example, revitalizing downtown may be expensive, and it may be difficult to secure the funding necessary to make the necessary improvements. There may be competing priorities for other important city resources such as public safety or education that make it difficult to allocate resources to downtown development. But by working together and incorporating everyone in the community to have a chance to pitch into this problem, we can create a downtown that is vibrant, inclusive, and welcoming to all. Thank you for your time and have a blessed day.
Thank you. That is the end of my list. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? They would like to take a picture. Can we do that? The kids that came for the government class, yes.
Yes.
Good morning, congratulations. Congratulations. Great job. Great job. Good morning, great job.
Hey there. Nice to see you. Good, thank you. How are you? Okay.
All right.
Thank y'all, thank y'all for coming. Good job.
Doctor Reddick, great job.
Let them get out up here. Moving on to item two, the consent agenda. I would ask anyone if you have items you want to pull for further discussion.
Motion to pass.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Moving on then to item three A, our regular agenda. Let me get to it in my book. I think Noe's online, right? I saw her let him in, yes. Um, receive information from Noe Hinahosa Estrada Hinahosa and Company in county's financial overview and potential consequences of contested property tax values. What financial options are available for Oasis County and other related matters? I believe we're just going to turn it over to Noe. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Commissioner?
I've got questions, but I mean, I'm waiting.
We've got questions, but I think he's online. I saw him, he was trying to get in.
And just kind of a general, where were we?
And he should have a presentation.
He should be in Zoom, right?
Yeah, he was a while ago. I saw him come in. Did he get lost?
While we're finding, can I ask Dale real quick something?
Yes.
Since this is kind of talking about the financial overview and potential consequences of the contested property values, do you have any numbers that you're comfortable with now that we know and saw the, the large adjustment made by the appraisal district?
As of this moment, we have not received evaluations from the appraisal district at the moment yet, so we're waiting to get those numbers. We should have them before the, uh, before lunch today and we'll actually be able to, uh, uh, bring those to you, uh, uh, at some point in time. They, the appraisal district did lower some of the values, so it's not as, as significant as it was. But there will be, still be a, an issue coming up. As soon as we have those balances available, we'll make sure the commissioners know what that, that, that case is. Uh, with, talking with the judge and what we've been hearing, it could be anywhere from a seven million down to a three million dollar deficit that we need to come up with.
Okay, and so, um, I think it's important that we, a- as soon as you're comfortable with it, that it needs to be presented, not just to us, but, you know, so that everybody knows, department heads, everyone knows, so that everybody can prepare. And then I guess based on those numbers, we would then need to have some sort of bu- budget workshop at that point maybe to-
Yes, I agree.
Start talking about it as to where we're going to go with that, because that's obviously, we've not faced that before and, uh, you know, we've never had to, you, you.
We've been close to three million before, but.
Not in the hole. I mean, I've never been on a court where we've been in the hole, I mean, maybe.
Well, again, until, until we actually get the numbers in and we look at where the position is for the county at the, at the moment, we're doing our estimates now, and I'll be telling you, uh, uh, when they bring the numbers to you, we've actually increased our fund balance this year. I'm not ready to give you those numbers out just yet, so, uh, but we are, we will see an increase in reserves this year, uh, any- anywhere from two to three or four million dollars because of our interest rates have been so high uh, and some other issues that we were able to recover. Uh, so that might overcome some of these items, but, and if the court does know that, uh, we, we prepare the levy and when we budget the levy for the county, we only budget ninety-five percent of that levy. So we're still within a, a little levy, so until we know a, a clear number of what that number would be, uh, it's not really, uh, the right time to say what we need to do until we get those numbers.
Yeah, I get it, and one of the things that, when we thought it was going to be far greater-
Yes.
That I'd asked for and you provided, I think I'd asked to give it to whole court, but I'm not sure if not, we circulate that was, was the unfilled positions-
Yes.
Because that was one of the areas that, that, um, I, you know, we certainly want to always look at that before we look at any kind of, you know, pe- people cuts. And, and so, and I get that that's not dollar for dollar, and there's some things that go into that, and it's also part of the ninety-five percent and not trying to get too far in the weeds on that, but I, I definitely, if that hadn't been circulated to the whole court, then we need to certainly, you know, look at that. And, and then we're going to be kind of on a short leash because we didn't have the budget workshops before because, whi- which I think was the right decision based on the fact that all those people were going to be coming and asking for budget increases when we thought we were going to be millions and millions more in the hole than it looks like we're going to be. So I, I don't know what the plan going forward on, on that is, but as soon as you get the, are we going to just wait until the next meeting?
What I would like to do is, is, uh, my staff and my, and we, of course, work with the tax office on, on this, this, figure out the values where is, what our levy would be at the no new, no new revenue tax number, at the voter approved tax number to see where revenue would be for levy wise, to see how much that would be, and see if we, if we could factor in that, that, uh, known balance that we won't receive from those two refineries because they are protesting the values. Uh, and that, and that, that'd be the time where I'll come to the court and ask the judge, can we have a special budget meeting that, that time we discuss it?
Fair, and I think that's just- No, no, I just say, I think that's just good for the public to know and for people who've been kind of sitting on ten, pins and needles waiting for all that to happen and, you know, the whole, that whole process. I'll save that discussion for another day because I certainly don't understand how you go from six billion to two and a half billion and sure smells a little interesting to me, but whatever the case may be, that, that certainly helps us at the county, it doesn't help the taxpayers that, if, if indeed those were the real values, and I don't know if they were or not, because we'll never know now because, for whatever reason, they, they cr- I don't know if I should say it, they cratered and went from six to two and a half and don't know why, don't know what happened. Um, but that's crazy that, you know, you spend a year working on valuations and then all of a sudden it drops in, like in a minute. So I don't know what the heck happened there, but good for the county, but, um, an interesting, an interesting situation for taxpayers, that's for sure.
Now, last year we did have this issue because the, uh, the, last year, both the Valero and Flint Hills also disputed their, their valuation. They said they were paying this great amount and their valuation was a little higher. It's not as significant as it is now, so we were able to oversee, oversee that because of the, the five percent we, we budget for. But now we're talking about a little bit higher numbers, so until we get those numbers, it's, it, I would like to bring in this, I definitely want to have a, a budget hearing at some point in time to let you know where we're at, what, what, what we need to do, and, and then we can say, okay, departments, we need to cut two, three, four, five percent, whatever it might be the case. And then some point, it might be that we might have to do, if you have some vacancies, we may need a reduction force just of the vacancies, not of the filled positions.
I, I want to let y'all know too, we're going to come back to this. Noe has asked for some more time. He is, he's gotten pulled away and Teresa will let me know when he's coming back, when he's available, so we're going to move on to item two.
Thank you.
Um, discuss and consider adopting a resolution in opposition to Texas Windstorm Insurance Association TUIA rate increases. And you have the resolution in, in your packet. I don't see Peyton or anybody who.
Motion approved Judge.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I would assume not. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes and they will be in your packets to sign for us to distribute, but we are certainly not for TUIA increases in rates right now after. Item number three, discuss and consider approving the Oasis County commitment for county's membership contribution of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, providing the same funding base amount of one million seven hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred ninety-six for the operation of the Corpus Christi, Oasis County Public Health District and related matters.
So moved.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I, I do want to at least state before we move on that we had mentioned in our meetings, and I think you were in there with me, Commissioner Gonzalez, that we would like to move this, um, to the end of July instead of the beginning of July. Their commitment because of situations like this were, they were really pounding us for a commitment and given the budget situation we were in, it was, uh, not prudent for the hospital district or ourselves, either one of us to come up with numbers like this.
Great point. How do we do that Judge?
I don't know, we need, as long as we're in favor.
Let's make that part of the amendment. Can we do that Jenny? I mean, that's, that's a great point because it was just totally, I mean, nine times out of ten. It's probably fine, but.
We're supposed to go back and talk to the city.
They were going to talk to the city, but I think that should be a motion maybe for us to include on our part.
Great idea Judge. I would, I would include that in the motion whoever made.
Okay. So what is, so what is the change? From July first, the commitment is what they said is in the MOU to the end of July, which gives us a little more time, especially in situations like this where we were all scrambling and hating to make a commitment.
Well, and it hurt us, it hurt us with collective bargaining and hurts, you know, lots of things we really shouldn't be doing until we know our budgets, so. I mean, maybe it should even be August fifteenth, I don't know, I mean, because we only barely get the certification, July, what, twenty?
Yeah. And their year ends the same time as ours, so maybe August fifteenth, we should ask for that. Not sure we'll get it, but I would certainly ask for that in it. We can certainly ask. To.
Working point, working.
The, um, I think the reasoning behind that at the beginning was so that everyone knows going into the budget cycle. We still don't know ours, exactly, so.
Right, I mean, obviously, if we can, we'll do it earlier, but.
But I mean, I think we should encourage when we know on those kind of times.
Yeah, I think the judge is right, and that should be a part of this motion is we would approve this subject to, you know, some amendment being.
To the MOU.
My amendment, second, my second.
Yeah.
Did you make the motion?
I think I did, right.
If you want to state it, yeah.
Subject, so my motion would be this would, that we would pass this subject to the amendment being that our deadline to let, the city know would be August fifteenth of each budget year instead of July one.
August fifteenth? Okay.
I meant my second to reflect the same.
So I will communicate with the city attorney and see if that's available. So we have a motion and a second. Um, is there any?
All, in other matters, do we need to wait to take a vote on this here before? I just want to bring up something.
Oh, go ahead, okay.
And I think at the meeting, we also talked about, um, the timeline and we talked about the, it was a five percent that was brought up also by the Health District. And, uh, at that time, we, uh, indicated that we won't probably discuss the five percent until budget time to see where we at, whether we go over or go under or whatever. So, uh, just to make it part of the record that this was brought up at the meeting, but I think the five percent needs to be discussed when we get closer to our budget to see where we at and.
Yes, I, I think you and I, we made that perfectly clear with them in the meeting that that would be a separate, we would have to bring it back and it would have to be discussed and approved, yes.
And I think, that's a good, I think, again, thank y'all for doing that because, um, it's really hard, and that's the other part that was really hard about this is because it's really hard to, to justify any kind of increase when we're looking at cuts. I mean, that's really hard, and, and I know the hospital district will, will get, will be affected by these appraisals as well, not as much as we will now because it's all come back down. But I, I, and they're the ones who fund this for us, of which, thank you to the hospital district for that. But, but, and thank y'all for attending that meeting and coming and doing that, so that's well noted.
Teresa.
I just wanted to mention also that the hospital district has agreed to commit to the one point seven, but that does not include the five percent, so.
Five percent, right, yeah.
So we have a motion and a second to pass with the, um, negotiation on the amendment to the contract to move the date. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously. Um, item number five, discuss and consider selection of international consulting engineers for-
What happened to four?
Oh, did I skip four, sorry, sorry. Um, discuss and consider Oasis County costs for the medical examiner's office to perform out-of-county autopsies for counties participating in an inter-local agreement. And Forrest, I think you have some stuff to pass out and a lot to discuss. And this was brought back so that we could get some more information on
Thank you.
Their fees and charges and.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning Judge Scott, commissioners. Forrest Mitchell, Director of Operations for the Oasis County Medical Examiner's Office. As Judge, as you mentioned, last meeting, we came to discuss the fact that Brooks County was in the rears and Commissioner Chesney requested this office to conduct a cost analysis of the Oasis County expenses incurred by conducting, uh, out-of-county autopsies, autopsies. So at the request of the Commissioners Court, we, um, came back, analyzed how we, um, conducted these investigations and death investigations and how much these cost. So I've prepared a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to share with you all as well. If we could go to the second slide please. So first I would kind of like to explain the methodology, um, in, well, the background. In October twenty-second, uh, or October of twenty-twenty-two, we asked the Commissioners Court to raise our fees. Uh, this had been the first fee increase that had ever occurred since twenty-fifteen. And subsequent to that fee increase, um, we have seen a change in the number of out-of-county autopsies that we conduct on a regular basis. If you could go to the next slide please. To explain the methodology of this, uh, this analysis, first what we do is we, um, have taken the total number of hours expended by each one of our staff, um, that conduct or involved in the autopsies and out-of-county billing. And then, um, we multiplied that times their fringe rate plus their salary benefits to get a total cost of each one of the autopsies that they conduct. And we did this analysis for two different types of autopsies. One would be a natural autopsy without toxicology that out-of-counties conduct, or request us to conduct. And then the second type of, um, autopsy that we analyzed was the out-of-county unnatural autopsy with toxicology. Next slide please. Oh, that's backwards. So the first type of autopsy that we analyzed would be the natural autopsy per case. And this totals up the number of hours that the medical examiners conduct, uh, that use to conduct these autopsies, prepare the reports, review the toxicology, detect the cases, and finalize their reports, as well as the autopsy technicians, medical examiner investigators, the transcriptionist, records coordinator, office administrator, and director of operations. In total, we estimate, uh, in addition to the infrastructure costs of this office, we estimate that each one of these autopsies, uh, costs approximately one thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents to conduct. For that, Oasis County bills, um, each of the participating counties two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for that autopsy. That's important because, um, when you look at the additional analysis, we have a doctor commission fee scheduled of forty percent. So, um, that reduces the amount that the county actually receives. We had projected that there will be approximately one hundred and forty-four out-of-county autopsies this fiscal year. However, that number may decrease because we have seen, um, a decline in the number of cases that we are getting in. So we can show that the Oasis County does indeed get a net, uh, growth for the general fund after the, uh, out-of-county commissions are paid for that type of case.
So you said it was twenty-eight ninety, what did you say, the total?
Yes, sir, two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, I'm sorry.
Sixty dollars, okay, and then, and if you multiply that times, we get sixty percent of that, right?
Yes, sir. Oasis County gets sixty percent of the autopsy fee.
Twenty-eight sixty times point six is seventeen hundred dollars that we get. And you're saying it's costing fifteen hundred and eighty, so we're making two hundred bucks?
That's correct, sir.
And that's, and.
That's an estimate, yes.
And, and you're, um, yeah, and, and some of these fees, and I don't know if you've gone through this with, with, uh, with Dale or anybody yet, but what I don't see, I see the hourly rates in there, is, and is that with the benefits? It says, I know it says salary per hour with benefits, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so, I don't know if there's other overhead, I mean, I don't know if you've gone over this with, with auditors or anything, just to see if there's anything that we haven't put in there, but i- i- at the end of the day, we're making, for, for all the work that is being provided. all the work that is being provided by the, um, staff and everything else, we're making two hundred dollars, and the doctors are making, they're getting paid, plus they're getting twenty-eight sixty times forty, so they're making eleven forty-four an autopsy ti- or, plus their salary, so they're, they're making six times for the autopsy what the county's making based on this analysis, per autopsy.
Well, Commissioner, that's not the only, the autopsy fee alone is not the only fee that we charge the surrounding counties.
Okay.
There are additional fees that we may charge the counties depending on a case-by-case basis, which actually increase the amount that comes to the county.
So what are those fees, where, and where are those in the presentation?
This is just basically, um, I'll, when I go to the, um, out-of-county unnatural, I will explain those fees, but an example of that would be an X-ray fee, an X-ray fee, we'll charge a county a hundred dollars for per X-ray that we conduct for this.
Okay, but let me, let me stay on this one, so this, this natural autopsy, I'm just doing one at a time, right, so on this natural autopsy, are there any other fees that get, get associated with the natural autopsies, this is the one you started with, so this is just the one.
This is if, this is if there were no other additional services provided, but we could have storage fees if the county doesn't come pick them up within twenty-four hours, we could have X-ray fees that would be added on top of that, but that's on a case-by-case basis, um, they may ask for us to do the blood spot.
So, but, so you would, what you would, how you would analyze that, in my opinion, would be you take an average, you'd say of the hundred and, whatever how many cases there are of the natural, sorry, the out-of-county natural autopsies, it's, it's costing us fifteen seventy-eight, we get charged twenty-eight sixty, and on the average of those cases, it's gonna be another two hundred bucks or three hundred bucks or a hundred and twelve dollars, I, that would be the anal- part of that analysis that I would want to see, because right now, what you're telling me is, without the additional fees, Nuasis County's making about two hundred bucks for an, per out-of-county natural autopsy, and it may be, it may be a little off, but it's twenty-eight, I mean, it's seventeen sixteen minus, it's not even two hundred dollars, seventeen sixteen minus, hang on, seventeen sixteen minus fifteen seventy-eight, we're making a hundred and thirty-eight dollars in Nuasis County for an autopsy, plus whatever those extra fees are, which I can't imagine they're gonna average more than a couple hundred bucks per case, unless I'm, is there something, something big on there, is there a big fee that I'm missing that could be?
If I could, Commissioner Chesney, sometimes, uh, there could be anywhere from three hundred to a thousand dollars of additional fees that are added on top of each invoice.
On the out-of-county natural autopsies?
Uh, well, it depends on a case-by-case basis, but yes, we, on the out-of-county natural, not as many as we would on the unnatural.
Well, and, and we're doing, this is what we're doing first, so tell me what there would, so tell me what the range of fees on the out-of-county, and we'll, and I'll let you do the same analysis on the next one, um, but I wanna know on this one, on the out-of-county natural autopsy, what's the average fee gonna be on those extra fees that's gonna make my hundred and thirty-eight dollars that I'm getting for all this work look better, could, I mean.
I just want to put, real question, so all the fees are coming out of the seventeen hundred dollars, but they're not coming out of the, the fees that, the, the doctor's portion of the forty percent, none of the fees come out of there?
Wait.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question.
It's sixty forty.
It's twenty-eight sixty total.
Right.
Forty percent of that is what I think he told me.
Right.
That forty percent of the twenty-eight sixty goes to the doctor.
Right.
And that leaves seventeen sixteen.
But are we paying any fees from those, from those monies that we give the doctor, from the forty percent, I know everything else has been taken out of the sixty percent, so that's why we only make two hundred dollars.
No, it's taken out a hundred percent.
Out of a hundred.
So the whole twenty-eight sixty, the fees come out first.
Yes.
Right, unless I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty-eight sixty, fees come out first, then cost, then whatever those additional fees are, wha- what would those be on the out-of-county natural autopsies?
Well, one that's pretty regularly done is the blood spot, um, card that we conduct for each, for the purposes of DNA analysis, uh, later on in the case, that's a fifty-dollar fee, um, that we would charge the participating counties.
And that's, but that doesn't happen on all of them?
No, it's on most of them.
Most of them, okay.
But on this analysis, the primary thing that I was evaluating was the actual cost of the employees, not so much the cost of the testing, because much of the, much of the testing and the analysis that this office does is pretty much at cost, and an important thing to think of, to remember about the, um, the fees that Nuasis County assesses, uh, for the purposes of conducting out-of-county autopsies, is we can only charge a reasonable fee, we can't make profit, really, out of, uh, what we're doing at the ME's office.
No, no, I, well, I get it, but, um, at the same time, we're committing all these resources to out-of-county, and, and we're having to, you know, bring in doctors and technicians and so forth, it's, it's gotta be justified, and I, I guess that's, that would be the, the additional, and, and if you don't have it, that's fine, but that would be the additional thing that I would like to know, because a- at this point, you're telling me basically Nuasis County makes a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and the, the doctors make about eleven hundred and fifty dollars, so the doctors, and whatever is in addition to the one thirty-eight, let's, uh, let's, let's round it up, let's say it's another seventy bucks a file, a hundred bucks a file, I don't know, but that gets us up to, say, two hundred and thirty-eight, and that's probably being generous, because on these, I know the other ones you're saying there's more, so basically, the doctors are making five times what the county's making on it, plus getting paid their.
Revenue fee.
Very nice amount of salary, so, just, it's a.
So, wouldn't a better way to calculate that, take out all those fees and expenses first, and then divide the sixty forty on what's left, I mean.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's like, everything, costs all come out first, and then if you're gonna divide up percentages, it should be after everything is taken out.
That's normally how.
That's not how we do that?
No, Judge, the, the commissions are based upon the employment contract with, um,
I didn't know that.
Dr. Fagan, and it's set up as a sixty forty of just the autopsy fee alone.
And I, and I appreciate you doing this, because this is a thing, we've, we've always heard about all this, oh my gosh, we can't do without this out-of-county revenue, and we've never done an analysis like this, and we've never really sat down and said, well, okay, but what's it costing us to do to get that revenue, like, okay, it, it may be five hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue, but it may be costing us four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, so, I mean, you know, what are we really doing here, right, so th- this is a great start, it's.
Excuse me for asking, but, uh.
Difficult stomach, but, go ahead, go ahead.
These extra fees that you keep talking about, they're not always done on a regular basis, that's only if needed, right, or requested?
That's correct, Commissioner, and is if, if the justice of the piece requests some specific type of testing be done, such as toxicology, or, uh, whether they're asking for identification for the, an unknown human remains, um, we have additional fees for that, um, if we have to bring in experts like, such as a, a forensic odontologist or a, a DNA expert, we, we would charge additional fees, based on the fee schedule you all have already approved.
Well, I, I just feel like, uh, those fees are not always there, and we're not always gonna, uh, benefit by them, okay, so, I'm like, have the same mindset as the other commissioner, I think we're losing out, we're putting out more money than what we're bringing in, the way it seems to me.
So, Commissioner, if I could add to that, um, the analysis that I provided you included, um, administrative support staff, that, and the time that it takes for us to take a look at the entire file, review the file, review the things that we did, and then to prepare that out-of-county bill, and we have seen an increase in the amount of billing that we are doing for those extra fees than in the years past, um, I'm reviewing each and every bill that goes out from our office to make sure that we are billing for what we have done, so that Nuasis County taxpayers aren't left, uh, holding the responsibility, so, um, there's part of my time, there's part of the office administrator time, who also reviews all of these bills, and the staff that prepare them.
You said this was part of the contract, when does that contract come up for renewal, or, or does the county attorney know when we can renegotiate that, or do we have an option to bring that in to renegotiate?
There's always, uh, an option to renegotiate, as, as the parties are both willing to do so, but this contract did not come with, uh, an end date.
No way.
It's, yeah, but the end date is.
Oh, wherever.
Well, there's an end date, it's, I mean, it's, I don't mean to, I mean, the end date would be.
As, as it comes up, as the commissioners decide it's time to.
Right.
Look at it again.
I think we need to review.
I, I just feel that we need to review, kinda make it beneficial to the taxpayers, to Nuasis County, to where we've been, we benefit as well, not just the doctors.
Well, and, and those are, that's a great point, Commissioner and Judge, and I think the, 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 the real point of all this too is, when we did these splits in the past, it was to supplement a lot less salaried positions that we had over there, we have made a considerable in- increase in what we pay the doctors now, considerable, to where at one point, we were the highest paying ME in the state of Texas, we set that bar pretty high, I think a couple of now have surpassed us since we've done that, but when we, that, I think that also has to be a, a part of the consideration going forward too, is we weren't paying our former ME anywhere near what we're paying this ME or the associates, and, and now we're paying extremely competitive salaries, um, and, and so, yeah, I think we have to look at all this, because, uh, I, I don't know that it's equitable any, anymore, uh, to, you know, to do it, and it may be an industry standard, and, you know, that's is, but I think we have to look at this from, and, and maybe we need to do, and you tell me, Dale, I mean, I appreciate, I mean, Forrest has always done a great job in his presentations, and I appreciate this, but I, and I know he did it real fast to get it back in here, do, do you, do we think your office could, could really, like, tighten this analysis up for us, do we need to hire, you know, an outside independent, you're, I know you're the quote independent auditor, that's, I'm asking you, right, what, what do you think we need to do, because I think we have to do this very in-depth analysis of this to see what this is costing us, and we've, and we've not done it before, we just never have, we've just always gone, great, we get all this revenue, but, holy cow, if, if, if we're getting all this revenue, and it's all offset by ninety-five percent of the cost, I mean, that's not great.
Yeah, Commissioner, I agree with what you're saying, because I believe analysis would be, be needed, and unfortunately, right now, the resources I have with going through a conversion and stuff, I don't really have the resources to commit to this, so to get a, 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 a true evaluation of what, what you're asking for, I would believe it'd be best for the county to go out, Forrest, a, a, a company, whoever y'all decided to use to, to do a true evaluation of, of our, our medical examiner, and compare it to another level, and, and others, other areas that, that do a regional type of, uh, autopsy set, setup for, for outti- outside, uh, counties, so, so I believe it'd probably be better that we brought in a professional that, that, that is experienced in, in this.
Well, on this fee schedule, there is a paper that you passed out that does have Travis and Tarrant County, and Fort Bend and private fees, is that something that would be?
So that goes a little bit towards later on in the end of my presentation, I was gonna kinda touch on that topic, uh, because.
But if we're talking about comparisons and what other counties do, this is the fees that they charge to do this.
Yes, Judge.
And I see that we kinda have a lot of charges that other counties don't, or not applicable, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Do they not charge, or do they not?
But the question on that, Judge, do the, these are the, the fees of the autopsies for these counties, but do these counties also have an agreement like we have to, to pay additional?
Yep, to me, that's, you know, really, I've never agreed to the sixty forty, you know, and, you know, we're gonna do analysis and everything else, and at one point, we're gonna, we're gonna have to decide whether we're gonna continue the sixty forty, you know, or that a hundred percent goes to the county, or, or, you know, ninety, ten, I don't, I, I don't agree with this, I never agreed with the sixty forty, you know, and now that I see the, where the expenses are going from, and that we really want paying for all the, for all the, the extra fees and everything else, and getting a hundred and thirty-eight dollars plus maybe fifty dollars, he said, then might do the test, it's a hundred and eighty-eight dollars, so, county is really, really in the bottom of this thing, so at one point, we need to really decide what we wanna do with that sixty forty.
And also, Commissioner, we need to reevaluate, because, as you know, you were, we're expanding that facility, and so the costs are, the county's gonna go up.
Right, I know.
Do you two commissioners want to take the lead on that?
I, I, I don't want to take the lead, I'm certainly willing to try a motion, because I, I, and that's why I was asking Dale, um, and I, I certainly wanna hear the rest of Forrest's presentation, but I, my, um, you know, my, my thought would be, and I don't know how we, I mean, I mean, certainly, I think we could, you know, hire someone like Ernest Garza, or someone who's done work for the county in a professional services manner before, you know, maybe Teresa can help with that, and with Dale, you know, put that together, I, I think, you know, you know, the, these are our money folks, right, these are the people that know the numbers the best, Teresa knows that stuff great, Dale knows that stuff well, and, but I think if we could, you know, get someone to, um, come in as an outside, and we just have to figure out how to fund it, and how much that would be, I don't, I don't know how to do that, does anybody have an idea on cost, Dale, what that would cost?
It depends, again, how you, how you use it, if we, uh, uh, if, I'm sure if we, we, we go up for a request, uh, it could be anywhere from ten to twenty-five thousand dollars, maybe, roughly, if you, if you, if you hire a, a independent auditing firm, it'll probably be maybe a little bit more, but I don't expect it to be more than thirty-five.
So, can we finish the presentation, 'cause I, I'd love to hear what Forrest has to say, I, I know this is one of those issues where we all feel like we gotta jump in, 'cause the information you give us is alarming, and it's, it, it's a wake-up call for us, and I know the public who may be tuning in, you know, kinda may get jarred on some of these numbers, but I wanna hear what your complete analysis is of all this, your complete presentation, 'cause I wanna weigh in as well, uh, but I wanna kinda hear what you're having to say first, uh, in the end, uh, because I have some thoughts also, uh, on this, but I, I wanted to hear what you have to say, 'cause you may give me exactly what I'm looking for, or what I'm, what I'm expecting to hear, but, um, can we, can we do that?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and as you're going forward in the presentation, so that I don't have to ask the same questions again on the next one, you know what my analysis needs to be, so if you could try to address that, and then I don't have to ask a bunch of questions, and then we can go from there.
Commissioner, I, I apologize that I didn't.
Just wait to the end and hold all your questions in, that might help to go by a little bit faster.
Well, no, I don't wanna do it that way, John, because I need to break it down the way I need to break it down.
Yeah, but we go up on these tangents, I mean, come on, let's let him present, I have a lot, no.
Well, jump in when you want to, John, I have the right to ask questions when I do.
I'm waiting to the end, Commissioner.
Okay, then that's fine, but I'm, I'm just saying, if you'll just present what I need on this, these other autopsies, then I don't have to ask questions, otherwise.
And I need information as well, Commissioner.
Let's move forward, thank you, Forrest, please begin.
I think you should get everything you want, whenever you want it.
Guys.
I like to wait to the end, hear all the information before I make assumptions or jump in.
So we're number five or number four?
That's why you're, you get to do it however you want, that's awesome.
This is four, and everybody has a voice, but that's not solving anything, so let's move forward, thank you.
Three minutes, three minutes.
Yes.
So there was the analysis that, uh, I did, basically on the out-of-county, which does show a positive net impact for the total number of cases, based on an estimate of a hundred and forty-four cases, uh, next slide, please, a significant portion of the cases that this office conducts are not necessarily just natural autopsies, there are also out-of-county autopsies that are unnatural, which would be like homicides, suicides, uh, drug deaths, and those take a significant amount of additional work by not only the medical examiner, but also the autopsy technicians who are assisting, so consequently, the cost for an unnatural autopsy with toxicology is higher, um, additionally, I've included, uh, an example of a cost where the county would be conducting a expanded toxicology panel at the request of potentially a justice of the peace, and so that cost would be, for example, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, and, um, and then additionally, as I mentioned before, there would be a blood spot card, which, though the blood scar card only costs us a small amount, the amount of time that it takes for our techs to draw the blood, use the blood, dry the blood, put the blood away, um, it goes up, so, you take a look at the total cost of what we've estimated to be, including an infrastructure cost, which I estimated, basically, based off of our budget, divided by the number of, uh, cases that we conduct a year, and then basically a ten percent of that, I estimated that being the costs of what we pay for IT, public works, utilities, supplies, and, and finance.
Forrest, do you have, I'm sorry to bother you, but do you, I, I don't have, is this, do we have this, 'cause I don't have, I've got a bunch of stuff in my packet, but I don't have.
Yes, sir, this was included in a memo that was provided in the materials, um.
Does everybody else have this, 'cause I, I've got.
Cost of out-of-county full unnatural, two thousand, yeah, it's on the second page in your packet, on the back page.
Okay, go ahead, I'll look forward again, I'll look through all of this.
So for that unnatural autopsy with these additional fees, uh, the infrastructure administrative, like, kind of overall amount, we estimate two thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars per autopsy, now, for that type of autopsy, we would bill an out-of-county for an unnatural death, thirty-eight ninety-five for just the autopsy fee, the additional expanded panel, we bill for three thirty, and the blood scar card collection and preservation, we bill fifty, for a total of four thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars per invoice, now, the, the doctor's commission is only out of the, um, autopsy fee, so, um, in that, we still are realizing a net positive impact, next slide, please. Here you can see the analysis of the, of the cost that we incur to do these autopsies, times a hundred and forty-four K. times 144 cases. We're estimating that amount to be $628,000 invoice to the counties. The autopsy fee is $573,000 alone. Of the 573, we're charging a 40% commission to the doctors, so they will be receiving $229,000 based on those commissions. The county, when you take the invoice, minus the commissions, there's approximately $399 left for the general fund. When you add in the Nuasis County costs, there is a net positive of $63,000. Those were out-of-county autopsy unnatural deaths. Next slide, please. Some other important factors that need to be considered is that if we had a temporary doctor or a locum's doctor that was a contract pathologist, the commissions are not paid on those cases. Nuasis County receives all of those funds for that out-of-county autopsy. And in fact, in some of those cases, just one out-of-county autopsy fee could pay for the locum's rate or, or the temporary doctor for that day. Additionally, as I mentioned before, some of these other fees that we collect on a case-by-case basis can significantly increase the amount of monies that Nuasis County realizes. For example, $100 for an x-ray fee, as I previously mentioned. This fiscal year, the county invested over $40,000 in a brand-new x-ray machine, and so we're able to realize, uh, some funds to recoup that investment and expenditure by the county by charging the other county's part of that fee. And so, that's $100 each. If we are going to be processing a decomposed body, the Nuasis County ME's office has always had a longstanding tradition of charging $550 for that, obese bodies and additional storage fees. So, in each one of those fees, we've already recognized, you know, significant funds to the general fund that aren't part of the commission schedule. For instance, so far this fiscal year, I've estimated that we have invoiced $13,100 for x-rays provided to other counties, as well as $8,700 in storage fees. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, based on this analysis, we are seeing a net positive impact to the general fund, but most of that net positive impact is actually coming from the other additional fees that this office charges in addition to the autopsy fee in and of itself. There's some important things to also think about, about this, and, which brings me to the next point of discussion, which is, we have now, as we increased our fees in October of last year, the result was many of the counties are now having to pay more for each of their autopsies. They have consequently gone out and then started seeking other counties to do autopsy fees that might be less expensive. So, from that, I have reached out and obtained the fee cost for Travis County, which are available online, their fee schedule, as well as Tarrant County's fee schedule, and I also obtained Fort Bend County's. Those are all other county medical examiner's office or district medical examiner offices that conduct out-of-county autopsies pursuant to interlocal agreements, and I put that in an analysis I just provided to the court of what their costs are. Because we have seen that we are charging much higher than these other counties, and we are seeing a decline in the number of cases that we are getting in, we know that these other counties in our surrounding area are engaging in signing in our local agreements with other ME's offices. We are proposing for the next fiscal year to potentially reduce just the autopsy fee and eliminate the unnatural versus natural fee, just have one autopsy fee that's uniform across the board, and try to simplify our fees to make it easier for, for ourselves and as well as the other counties. And so, I provided that analysis of what we're proposing for next fiscal year. I'm not ready for the court to, to, to make a final judgment on it. We just wanted to put that out as potentially a new fee schedule that we may be requesting the court to approve later on. Next slide, please. So, some of the things that I talked about up there were reducing the autopsy fee from $3,985 to only $3,495. So, it's a significant decline. Next slide, please. That's, that's it. I have, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any of these questions. I've, I've given you a proposed new fee schedule after consultation with the county attorney's office yesterday. We revised it a little bit. That's what you were provided today. I would propose that I come back to the commissioner's court and seek formal adoption in a later time.
Are, now, are there any other questions? John, you want to start?
Thanks, Judge.
Commissioner Motta, sorry.
Thanks, John, Judge. So, the, the two attachments that we got, the proposed fee and the fee, that, the fee schedule, the analysis with the, the three other counties and the private cost, that already includes this separate data?
Yes.
So, the new, or the proposed fees that you present, okay. So, we really have to look just at this one sheet that you gave us. I'm in agreement with the court, you know, it, once again, it's, it's, you know, it's concerning when you look at the, you know, how much does it cost and how much are we getting out of it, right? We've always taken that kind of regional approach to wanting to provide this service, because we know so many surrounding counties don't have it. I, I've, I know I feel, and I'm sure the majority of the court feels, that we need to be able to see a cost recouped that makes it worth it. I know we shouldn't profit, but enough to be able to cover all the additional charges, and hopefully to do some upgrades, right? I think that that's something you'll find all of us in agreement on. So, I'm not, I'm not changing from what you've already heard from the majority of the court already say on that. But my concern was, what you kind of mentioned towards the end, is those smaller counties, I think I used Clayburg as an example the last time we talked about this, which was probably two or three regular meetings ago. There are other counties that are looking, right? We've, we've had other counties that have already kind of broached the idea and are looking for someone else to be able to provide that to them. We obviously have more than enough work. My concern to you as the administrator, even though you work closely with the ME's office, is that, you know, you, you, you're required to provide us a duty, and, and your, your thoughts, your analysis on this, is that when I look at this cost, I want to make sure that we, we were the highest paying ME's office for a while there in Texas, like Commissioner Chesney said, and it was really just because we got caught in the market at the time that we did. Had it been a year prior, we might not have been at that amount, or we might have realized that amount a year earlier. Or if we had just come to this, to this issue right now, we would have found that we would pay even more than what we originally went into. Uh, you know, this is a very difficult public service, public health, uh, item that we're required to provide for our residents. And so, I just want to make sure that, that we are doing it at, once again, that we're covering all our costs, and that the service we provide to surrounding counties helps us just ever so slightly, like, we don't want to make a, a profit off of this type of work done, right? But it's a necessity. So, I just want to make sure that we have enough to cover all of our other expenses, not that it helps the general fund, but just that it goes back into return on investment within this department, within this service that's provided. That's, that's my whole concern with all of this. It seems like in your presentation, what you've provided is, and it's a lot to take right now, so it's gonna take some time to, to really look more into this, but I appreciate you giving us at least three other county perspectives. Those are much larger counties, but our former, former medical examiner came from Travis County and was doing private work, so this helps us get a better understanding of what that cost is. You know, my concern is, is that we're, we're losing potential counties, that if we are to be able to use some of that money to recoup our costs, then we're gonna have fewer and fewer, and we're already seeing that happen. But we're also seeing the fact that some can't pay. Is it because it needs to be more streamlined? I'd love, I, you know, the simpler the better for me. It's just because it's easier for anyone to go look at it. It provides transparency. It's easier for other policymakers in other counties to say, hey, yeah, we want to go with Nuasis County, because they have it broken down real simply, and they can just quickly do the math and not have to figure out, well, in these instances, in these occasions, well, we're gonna have to pay more, and what does that bottom dollar mean? So, I just want to make sure that we do have it simplified. And, and, and so, you know, I think this is the first help step to help us do that. I do believe that we do need to make sure that we can show the public that as much money that has been invested in this department is worth it. But I also want to show our partners that have, have gone years or decades with Nuasis County, that they can rely on us, they can trust in us to provide them the same service they always had. So, this, this, this profession is going to increase in salary. My, my thoughts on this is with, with the salary that we have provided our medical examiner and team, you know, is that kind of compensation expected, right? So, it's like our base on top of the extra that they make. Is that the true number, right? Cause I feel, uh, at least maybe what I'm hearing, maybe I'm wrong, or at least the way I feel individually, was I always thought it was just, that's the base, and that's the number, and that's what it is. But reality is, is you add on the extra fees that they can make with, with these other counties or these other services that they're doing, it doesn't necessarily all go in to that base, right? So, say the number is 250,000. Well, reality is, if you add on other counties and services, they're gonna be making more than that 250 that we're paying them. Is that correct, Forrest?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Mars, to your point, if you, if you, Nuasis County has a unique commission structure, I think, for the doctors that we have. I mean, many of the other offices, medical examiner offices throughout the state, when they do out-of-counties, those actually just go to the operating funds of those departments. So, the additional commissions is obviously an incentive, you know, it's extra pay for the, for the doctors who are performing the autopsies. The market, it changes as every agency or every county changes their salary fee schedule. So, in other words, after Nuasis County raised the, you know, salaries for its staff, then potentially other jurisdictions in the state have raised their salaries. I know that there's open source material from, you know, news media that Bear County raised the rates for their medical examiners, because they're suffering a shortage of staff, and so they got an increase for all of their deputy MEs. And I think it's a very competitive market, and I, I think that those wages are constantly growing, just like every, all wages across the board, whether it's a police officer, ME, or clerk, you know, we're all facing higher labor costs. So, the additional commissions are added on to the salary that's already provided for the employee, and so it's a very competitive salary for-
So, and, and that's my, my biggest concern with all this, is I don't want to send a message to anyone in the community, to our partners in surrounding counties, or to our, our medical examiners or the deputies, the assistants, at all that we are second-guessing the work that they're doing. That's why I worry is anytime there's scrutiny, and I don't think that that's the intent of anyone on this court. We just want to make sure we get the numbers right, and that we, we bring in the, the revenue that can help offset these salaries. I, I love the idea of, it goes right into the operating costs. I think that, that's a structure that maybe that's what's gonna be proposed, and that's what we should look at for the future, and maybe to build up to that. But I, I just, you know, looking at how long of a road it took us to get here, that's my biggest concern, is look how many years did it actually take us to kind of hit the brakes, recover from a, a long-serving medical examiner, and get into a, a term where there was, there was legal questions, legal concerns that were brought up, and then to recover with Dr. Fagan. Now, I'm not saying he's the best in the world, but I think he's doing a pretty good job for us, and, and I would argue maybe he is one of the better ones in the country. But I want to make sure that, that they understand as well as that, you know, for me, it's not about the work that they're doing. We just want to make sure that we're getting this done right, that that money is being recouped, so that we can make sure that it's a self-sustaining department, and that that revenue, yes, it, it goes to maybe a supplemental salary, but it's specialized, it's a specialized work that, we tested the market. I mean, we, we shot out a price that we didn't get hardly any interest on, none, and we were just scratching our heads up here, wondering, how are we going to recover? And, and, and using temporary medical examiners or continuing contracts from previous medical examiners to keep them on board. So, I just want to make sure that we create a structure that keeps us competitive, that keeps our medical examiner and his deputies happy, and, and we'll keep, we'll, we'll make sure that we provide a good service, and that we're not losing more counties, because I do believe those counties should help supplement our costs. So, I know, very long-winded, but I, it's, it's, it's a long answer, because it's not just something simply that we can just say, we need to change it. If, if we do, I think it should be drawn out, we approach this, but I, I do appreciate all the work that they've done. I mean, I've put money that I have from my own funding into this department, because I felt so confidently in the need to attract and retain the medical staff that we have. So, if, if anyone, you know, has any concerns of why I'm coming this way, I've, I've put some of those money that I could be putting in other places, because this is just as an important part as providing streets and administration of justice and other key functions that we have to worry about as a county, so.
Commissioner, if I could add one point to yours. I mean, I think one of the important things about this, this commission that is paid to the, to the doctors who are conducting these autopsies, is a recruitment and retention component to this. Right now, your medical examiner's office is fully staffed. You have all the medical examiners, that those positions are all filled. All of your autopsy technicians are filled. All of your investigator spots are filled, and all of your administrative staff are filled. That's, I think, probably the first time in a long time that we have all our staff completely filled, and I don't think there's a whole lot of medical examiner's offices in the state that can say that at this time. If the commissions were reduced or lost potentially, then, you know, you might have more trouble maintaining that 100% staffing level, which if we lose any doctors, we have to go out and get temporary doctors, pay for travel, pay for those, you know, those costs as well, and that, and that, that comes into play as well. So, recruitment and retention is an important part of those commissions that is, is part of the dynamic that I think needs to be evaluated.
And I agree with that, Forrest, by all means, and I agree with Commissioner Motta's, we don't want this to seem like any of us are not, are against our, the work that's been done and the, the progress we've made over there and what we're doing moving forward. That being said, given the situation the county's in as well, and if these out-of-county people are not bringing them to us anymore, do we really need all three of those, and are they willing to come to the table and work with us to help get through this bad year as well? So, that was my only discussion, and it is, we're in this together, every department. Every department here is vital. They provide great services to our community, but the rest of us are working together. We have to come to the table with y'all as well.
Absolutely, Judge, and, and we're obviously recognizing a trend that we see a declining amount of the number of cases that are coming in, and so, just in the last two months, we've seen a decline. Commissioner Chesney, I provided stats to your office yesterday. In July, so far, we've only got five cases that came into our office, versus last year, we had 12.
Yeah.
In June, there was five, or five or six as well, and it was a higher month.
That's my concern. That's a pretty big-
And so then, one of the things that has happened is that one of the retired pathologists from this area has opened up a private practice, and he is doing some of these cases that we would normally be receiving for, from these other counties, and so that's pulling potentially some of the, the cases that we would have. So, it's something that we're monitoring, we're concerned about, and that's one of the reasons why I've reached out to some of the counties to see who they're gonna be working with, and, and learning that they've entered, entered local agreements with other counties. And so, I believe that this proposed fee schedule moving forward for next fiscal year simplifies those fees. We are still not losing money based off the-
Simplifying, I agree with, but we are not Tarrant or Travis County or anything. I don't want to price us out of competition, because, you know, people have, the former doctor, I mean, we, we need to be competitive as well, so.
Yes, Judge.
Can I, um-
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Chesney.
No, that's okay. I didn't, were you done? I didn't mean to-
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
Um, so Forrest, I just need to make sure too that I understand, um, as we're, uh, because I still think it would be advantageous if the court does to, to do an analysis. Um, but, um, my understanding too, if I'm not mistaken, well, let me ask it. I'm not going to say my understanding. Because of the additional, um, out of county, um, autopsies, that is part of what makes us have three doctors, right? I mean, if we did the same number, let's just say all the out of counties went away, just for sake of a hypothetical, if, if we didn't do any out of county at all, would we need the third doctor to be in the, I think it's the N A M E certification? Is that what it's called, N A M E?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Chesney, there's a, the National Association of Medical Examiners has a, an accreditation, uh, schedule where they basically indicate that it needs to be 325, uh, autopsies or less per doctor on average uh, for complete autopsies and partial autopsies and external examinations.
Good.
So when you look at that number and you divide it by the number of, uh, medical examiners, that gives us, you know, how many we need to have on staff. Um, our number of autopsies decreased, uh, from its height from a couple of years ago. And so we're estimating will be around 650, 652 this year. Um, that would be right on the edge of not being able to seek accreditation.
And of that 650, how many of that is out of county?
Right now, we're estimating, uh, in the analysis I gave you, I estimated about 144.
Okay.
So I think we, I think we actually may come in less than that um, because of the reduced number of autopsies that we're seeing, so.
Which would take our 650 down too, right? That would take the, if you're, you're saying you're estimating 650 and, and 144 of those are out of county. If, if, if we only get 130, then that's going to be 640 or 630, right? So, but if I take the, the six, I'm going to say the six, I'm going to make it easy for me, 654. Okay, so then I'm down to, if I, if we did away with all out of county, just for, you know, hypothetical, we'd be at 510, which would be well under what we would need to have for just two doctors, right?
Correct. I mean, it's 325 on average per doctor, um, for, for the staffing level to get a, that is provisionally passing accreditation. Ideally, it's less than that. It should be, I think, around 275, I think is the number.
Okay, so, so, um, so then what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is when we're doing this analysis, you have to factor in a large portion of that third doctor in the analysis because the out of county ones, which are revenue, there also is cost involved. And if we didn't have any of the out of counties, if we just said, and I'm not saying we're doing that, I'm just saying, I just think everybody understands the analysis here and why it's so important to do it. If we took out all the out of counties and said, we're not going to do them anymore, then we'd only need two doctors, not three. So that would reduce that a lot. And again, I'm not suggesting that at this moment. I'm suggesting that, that part of, that, that has to be factored into the cost of what these out of counties are doing. Because if I'm reading this right, your, your analysis was 19728 net on the, uh, I'm sorry, I'm going to say I'm right, the out of county full natural autopsies to the general fund and 639897 net for the autopsies with toxicology. Those are the only two, right?
Well, there's different, there's different types. We could have natural with toxicology, you know, unnatural without toxic, I mean.
But there's not another, is there another category?
I just did two, I just did two analyses for the, for the commissioners to see two different case types. We have other case types that we do.
Okay, so I guess what I would prob, yeah, I guess that's why I want to kind of go a little farther into this is, is if we did all of it, right? If we did all the different types, what would be the net to the general fund after the cost? But then what costs have to go in? My argument would be you'd have to put a large portion of that third doctor as part of the cost of doing business. Because if you just did the Oasis County.
Right.
And let's say it's 275, right? So that's, what is it, 550? And we're at 510, if you take out all the out of counties, you can see where I'm going here. So the cost for these out of counties really and truly may be a lost leader. Not only that, we may be losing money doing out of counties. I'm not saying we are, I don't know. And I'm doing this real fast based on this analysis that you give that I really appreciate. But this is why I really think we have to, especially what we're, like the judge said and Commissioner, and, and, and I, I don't disagree with anything Commissioner Morris said. I didn't disagree with anything the judge said. So, uh, but, but especially with what's going on right now with all our budget constraints is, and we ought to be doing this with every department. Now, I'm not just picking on the ME, it's just here today. I think we ought to do it with every department. No, I mean, we really should.
We're going to.
We ought to analyze every department like this so, so that nobody thinks, you know, we're not, you know, and, and, but I, this is why I believe we really need to do this analysis to show, okay, what is it really costing us to do this out of county work the way we're doing it? And the only way to, to make it work may be to not have the incentives or to not have a third doctor. And I'm not, again, I'm not suggesting that because I don't want that to happen because I'm thrilled with the doctors we have and.
The good dog.
And, and the stability in the office and the work that's being done. I want to echo all that too, but, but, so this, this is not a, in any way, shape or form, a, um, a, a negative to the work that's being done, to, to Dr. Fagan, to the other doctors. It's, it's pure numbers. To me, this is pure numbers and this is nothing personal. This is, I just don't know that we're, that we're, that this out of county stuff is worth it. I just don't, I don't, it may be, I, maybe it may come back with an analysis that we've all missed something. You missed something, I missed something, maybe, but I, I'm going to make a motion that we.
Maybe we're able to keep the whole amount.
Yeah, or, and that may be, or to not do it at all, or something. Because you have to put in that third doctor's cost as part of the cost of these out of counties because it, it is what is causing us to go over the, the accreditation numbers. It's what's causing us to have the third doctor because we all want to get that accreditation back. If not, we could do it with two if we didn't do out of county. I get that's extreme. I'm not suggesting it today. I'm saying I would make a motion to do an independent analysis and I would charge Teresa and Dale to come back with some kind of proposal for us to do that. I don't know exactly how to word it, to do it right at the next meeting and, and let us.
Second.
Look at that.
At the next meeting, Commissioner?
Well, just a, just a proposal, on what you propose.
What you propose, because it'll have to go out.
Raise your hand, raise your hand.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to go out to do an analysis, to hire an independent auditor to do an analysis, to find the benefits and the cost, uh, uh, how we move forward with this and how it can be, um, cost effective for Oasis County. Any other discussion?
Yes, Judge.
Yes.
So Commissioner, I mean, that's a pretty tight turnaround, which I get it. I mean, we're going to be busy these next couple of months. I mean, we're going to see a lot of each other. Um, but, I mean, do you think that's a fair amount of time to get the?
It's just to make a, it's just to make a recommendation. It's just to say, to recommend to us what we need to, like.
Okay.
Do we need to hire an Ernest Garza? Do we need to hire? I don't know what we need to do. I'm just, I don't want to just throw something out and make a, it, it's more just to come back and tell us, hey, look, this is what y'all need to do to move forward.
I'd like to add the contract in there as well, since she said there was no, for us to look at that too in the future. If we're.
You can put that on anytime you want. I'm more than happy to do that.
I would like to do that, yes. Uh, just for review, I'm not saying we're going to make any changes, but you said it's open ended. I'd really like to look at that and see what options we have and how we make it better for all of us working together.
Got to have expiration time.
Yeah. Um, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second.
And Teresa, Dale, is that clear enough to what we're trying to get from you all? It's not the analysis, it's what do we do to get the analysis, okay? Okay, I don't want y'all to think that's what we're, okay.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you.
Forrest, thanks for this, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. Thank you.
Um, we have Noe on the line. We're going to go back to item number one, guys, before, um.
Oh, if I could, Judge, just for.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Tell David one more thing about Brooks County. We suspended taking any new cases from Brooks County until such time as we have received payment. We still have not received payment as of yesterday. So, um, we, we have three outstanding invoices in excess of 60 days.
Do we get a motion on that or?
No, we did last time. I think we, or did we?
In consultation with the county attorney's office, the AME's office has the.
The authority.
The authority to do it. I just wanted to update the court.
I thought that was kind of the direction we sent you off with last time, so yes. Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you. And unfortunate for them, I'm very sorry. Hope they get that cleared up and we're back in good standing as soon as possible, yeah.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Um, moving back to item number one, and Noe Hinaosa is on to receive the information from Estrada, Hinaosa and Company on the county's financial overview and potential consequences of the contested property tax values. I did receive a paper, I took it to Dale. Uh, we still, it's preliminary, we don't have any figures or numbers worked out on that. But I don't, do you want to say anything, Dale, before they get started?
What, to check the valuation? Because if we looked at where it was, uh, prior year, I believe it was like 43 billion. We're now at 47 billion, so it's like a $4 billion increase in value. So it's just a rough estimate of cost of, of, of the increase. But these are the balances still under protest. So those numbers can go up or down a little bit based on how those, uh, ARBs come out. Uh, but we'll, we'll get with the, the true numbers when we get the balances from the appraisal district and actually start doing our calculations.
Thank you. Um, Noe, are you ready? Thank you so much for getting on and taking the time today, yes.
You bet, Judge, and members of the court. Noe Hinaosa here with Estrada, Hinaosa and Company. And basically, I think some of you or all of you may have received from us a packet that we prepared a couple of weeks back. It may not show the, uh, the most accurate property values as those, as you know, are, are being revised and maybe potentially protested for that matter. We won't know that, if I understand this correctly, till after the end of the month, um, at which time you have ample opportunity to, um, to accept them and, and set up that tax rate for September. I think if anything, uh, what we're trying to show you today, um, is, uh, on page two of the, of the handout, and I don't know if, uh, if I can share from my computer. Be happy to, um, see if I can. I don't think I can, but, uh, basically if you go to page two there, whoever's managing this presentation. God, great. So there, um, we have, uh, the county has about 11 bond issues outstanding, uh, principal outstanding, bar is about 163 million. And, uh, and then, uh, uh, that is reflected by having annual payments just like your mortgage would on an annual basis for about 15.9 million dollars a year. Uh, so all of those, as you can see at the bottom part of that page, you'll find, uh, some bars with dark, uh, the dark blue represent principal, uh, the gray bars represent interest. Uh, on the bottom, on the top right hand corner, you'll find the, uh, the ratings, uh, as, as released by, um, Moody's of a double eight two, the standard and force of a double eight. Uh, the, the Moody's ratings was a, a firm back in November of 2022. And S and P, uh, basically gave those ratings, uh, on about April of 2021. Uh, today, the tax rate, as you can see there on the, on the right hand corner, uh, it's about 2917 cents. If you had to set up a tax rate, uh, for the, uh, for the following year, we'll do that in September, once we have property values put in place. I know Judge and, and others had expressed a concern of, of, um, the anomaly of, of, of values that are predicted or projected for, uh, the year 24. And there's, uh, we believe there's a few, uh, strategies, uh, that you can implement in an effort to, um, to not have to deal with, with, I guess, uh, uh, a taxpayer being concerned of being, uh, levying too much of a tax. Uh, uh, in talking to some friends in the legal profession, which I think, uh, that's something that you should consider, uh, uh, in doing, uh, in setting up the tax rate for next year, is that, uh, the court through the judge may have the ability to, um, uh, apply, I guess, uh, an executive power having to do with what the value should be in case, uh, there's still some, uh, um, discontent taxpayers where you basically assume that you, that you will have an adjusted value versus the appraised value that has been given by the appraisal district while you're trying to resolve, uh, those concerns that may have been expressed by a taxpayer. Uh, the other thing you can do is set up a tax rate, uh, with a delinquency ratio that is, uh, higher than normal. Uh, right now, uh, the collection ratio in Oasis County is about 98%. And, uh, from time to time, especially with dealing with, uh, with large taxpayers, uh, uh, that may express a, a concern over their values, uh, uh, local subdivisions can set up a, a tax rate, assuming a lower collection because of the fact that there's been an expressed concern of, of how, uh, how that value was arrived to. So that protest by that taxpayer can take years to resolve. So, so that's another way that you can go about preserving the tax rate. What's important here is that your tax rate has been in the 31 cent range. In '23, it dropped to 29.7 cents. And a lot of it had to do with the taxable, it says, values. The values at the county have been growing pretty consistently, uh, at, at, at levels higher than the three and a half percent that is provided by, uh, that is limited by rollback rate. In fact, last year, from '23 to '22, uh, the rate grew, or the value grew about 10.6%. Previous years, you've been in the neighborhood of about 4.5%. On this page, what, what you will see is in these bars as they rise, they're rising, uh, when you look at the bar of, uh, blue and green, and gray, you'll see that, uh, uh, an escalating bar that exceeds at one, at some point, the payment will be close to 16 and a half million dollars. And the red line is your levy. So if you follow the next page, um, you'll see across the table that, um, the tax rate that we assume, which is the third column from right to left, um, that 4.2 cent, that's the tax rate you're currently collecting for, uh, uh, to pay off the debt. And years to come, that same tax rate, assuming that the values will grow the way we projected, uh, this time last year, you'll have enough money to, uh, uh, to make those payments. What we've also done is the use of the savings account. On the right hand corner, there's a little number there that says, uh, fund balance of 3 million eight. Well, uh, we, we intend to use that, uh, that, uh, savings account from time to time in an effort to preserve the tax rate at a 4.2 cents, or in this case, reflected as a .042069. As you can see, based on assumptions of growth, of value growth, uh, and they were very conservative. I mean, you look at '24, uh, which is the following year, we're looking at values of 37.6 billion versus the current 36.3. But we all know that that number is, uh, is well exceeded. So, uh, the question is, how do we, as a court, how does the, the, the judge will set the tax rate in terms of, uh, what will be a good value? And, and again, what I've been told is that there are two ways. You either adjust the value to something more practical, something more, uh, more in a real, in a real form, in a real sense, or you increase to the, 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 the delinquency, the projected delinquency in ca, in case the taxpayer, the large taxpayer is, uh, object to, to that kind of a levy. So I'll stop there for now, if you, anybody has any questions?
Anybody want?
So then I'll go to the next section on page nine of this, of the sec, of, of this, of the next section. This is a report that we are required, that the county is required by the Securities and Exchange Commission to prepare, uh, not later than six months after the fiscal year ends. So your audits, once the audits are presented to us, we put together this, uh, this, uh, book, we send it, uh, or this, uh, this pamphlet, and we, and we send it up to, uh, to Washington DC for a, a national depository of financial information of the local subdivisions. And that's required by law in lieu of the fact that you borrow money in the past. So if you go to table nine in that, in that, uh, section, it pretty much gives you a summary of your income statement, of your financial audit report. And in it, one of the things that have been expressed as a concern have been how will we, would, would the county be able to operate, uh, you know, the county in '24 in lieu of the fact that, that we have these challenges in terms of, uh, uh, people concerned with protests and so on and so forth. Um, in 2018, your operating budget, uh, was about 82 million dollars. Of course, you got transfers out, which is reflected on the, on the, on the numbers right below that of about 7 million in '18. Of course, you got transfers out, which is reflected on the, on the, on the numbers right below that of about seven million in eighteen. So combined, you had a budget, general fund budget of about ninety million bucks. And then, but today, you're more like a hundred and six million dollars when you take into account your expense of ninety-five point eight plus operating transfers out of about eleven million dollars. You're closer to a hundred and seven thereabouts. With that, you are generating revenues of about a hundred and three million versus ninety million five years ago. So what the rating agencies keep an eye on is trends. You know, what's, where's most of your expense focused on? And we all know that county, county governments spend most of their money on law enforcement and corrections. The courts, administration of justice is the second largest expense, and then you got general government. So the last thing you want to have is assume that a, that the tax rate you set forth does not allow you to up, to operate those three main services. And, and when you take into account that, then the only other thing that we can rely on in case you don't generate that revenue is your savings account, your fund balance. So that fund balance is reflected at the bottom, where basically in twenty-eighteen, you had about eighteen million nine, closer to nineteen million. And today, you're about twenty-five point seven million. And, and that's, in our opinion, a pretty reasonable savings account. Can it be improved? Yes, it can be improved. Is it, are you expected to have a higher savings account there? The market standards, and I will show you that in a minute. The market standards, market expectations expect the county to have maybe another, another five million dollars in savings account there. If, if not even higher in lieu of the fact that you, your proximity to the vault and, and being exposed to, to acts of God. But basically, that fund balance at the bottom, sometimes some of it is encumbered. And Dale will tell you and others who operate budget and finances will show you that that twenty-five point seven million is not all available funds. This is, in the audit, what we reflect is the funds that are available, but some of those funds are encumbered to succeeding months, succeeding contracts, you know, and so on and so forth. So there are encumbrances on that twenty-five seven. And I suspect, Adele, if you give me a hand here, that a good eight to ten million dollars may be encumbered out of that twenty-five.
I had to check, but that's probably right, yeah.
Yeah. So basically, that's, that's what you deal with. So in case, in case you were to be unable, if you go to the higher part of, of that page, you'll see a, a line item up at the top that says add valor in taxes, penalty and interest, about eighty-five million three. So that's most of your revenue. That's where the revenue comes from, property taxes. So the last thing you want to do is not set the appropriate tax rate in order to be able to operate the county government. And, and when, when you have disputes on property values, disputes on property taxes, well, that's the line you're looking at. And you don't want to affect that. I mean, in eighteen, you collected about seventy million. In twenty-two, you collected eighty-five million. I suspect twenty-three, the year that we're under, you're going to be higher than that because property values helped. And, and, and the tax rate was pretty much set at, at, at an appropriate, at an appropriate level. So any questions there?
Can you explain a little bit, Noe, about what happens on this fund balance? I know we have encumbered portions of it, but if we try to use that too much to bail ourselves out of this situation, what that, what that would do to the county's finances and, and lowering that amount too much?
Yeah. Well, I guess what we try to do is kind of give you a perspective that there's never enough money in that savings account, especially for a county like yours where you're so, so exposed to the elements. You know, we've had, I'm not going to tell you this. I mean, there's global warming, the waters are hotter than ever. You know, people in the weather business talk about maybe having, you know, stronger hurricanes, if something like that were to happen. That's, that's where you go lean out on those fund balances. FEMA will come and rescue you, but sometimes, not going to tell you this, but FEMA will take its time. Not long ago, you had a, a big event that affected also property values at, at the county where we had a wipeout of a community there in, in Neshas County, I believe. And, and thus, fund balance for someone like you is expected to be a little higher. So if you were to use that fund balance in an effort to balance your budget in lieu of not having sufficient tax rate, property values being over, overvalued and, and that somebody challenges and, and then you end up in this, in this dispute. It's a pretty finicky process for you all. But at the end of the day, I would say fund balance should be used as a last resort in an effort to balance your budget. We believe that strongly that when we had a downgrade of, of the county's rating three or four years ago, had a lot to do with a couple of things. Fund balance being depleted to levels, I mean, we used to be at twenty-five million, I think, at one time. And, and they dropped to levels of closer to sixteen or seventeen. At that time, the rating agencies reacted to, to dropping the, the credit ratings. When your credit ratings drop, basically the, the cost of borrowing gets a little higher. And, and in uncertain markets and volatile markets, like the ones we're in today, in terms of borrowing markets, the spreads of a double eight-two rating like the one you have versus double eight-three, it can be wider. Wider in the sense that instead of borrowing, let's say at a four and a quarter, you may have to borrow at a four thirty-five. Well, when you borrow money, you're not borrowing money only in five or ten million dollars increments. You're borrowing money in fifteen, twenty-five million dollar increments, and that spread can be costly for you and for your taxpayer. So what you try to do is, is be prudent and try to be, I guess, at a point of your fund balance, your tax rate to be kind of consistent with what others around the state are doing.
And you think right now our fund balance for this, this year, the ending twenty-twenty-three, should be even an additional five million for that, for a?
I, I would say that for twenty-twenty-three, you know, you've got literally a couple of months left. As long as you don't have a significant drawdown, you know, of two or three negative, I'd rather see two or three positive. Of course, Dale will tell us and others, you know, how well we're doing in probably another, another month or two. I haven't seen the year-to-date numbers for the county, but I suspect that having this court and as conservative as you've been in the past, I suspect that you're going to have a, a little bit of a, of a, of a savings account added to that, to that line item. But I don't know. Can anyone tell me what that, what you projected to be, fund balance?
Dale's going to answer that.
Yeah, and Noe, as we, as we saw, we're, we're doing our evaluation and our estimates right now. And we're going to reevaluate some of the larger departments, some of the larger expenses coming in. Right now, I know we're going to have an increase of, of reserves. And right now, it's going to be anywhere from one to five. I don't know the exact amount yet, but one to five million, yeah.
Excellent. Well, I guess the only thing that is red in, in this column is probably Dale's shirt. And I'm sorry, I say that, but, but you know, Dale can be very conservative. You guys could be very conservative.
So Dale, is that what you were any early, talking about earlier that?
The interest.
That, that, right, that because of some of the overage, you would, you're going to be maybe proposing, or someone's going to be proposing that we use that for some of the deficit?
Well, that's, that's definitely a discussion we can have with the court because we can say, because of where our interest rates right now. And right now, where we just did some investments where we're ma, we're making six percent interest. So we're making a significant amount of money. So on our interest, our, our evaluations of this, this last year, last year, we made two hundred and sixty-five thousand. This year, we're making six point five million in interest. So some of that can cover this unexpected cost that we won't expect to receive from, because of these two refineries. But what I like to do for our case is, I would like to say, okay, here was the levy, here was the uncollected amount. And this is what we know what was from the prior year's balances. And this would, this would be this, how much of this year's, and this is what kind of effect it would be, and this is how we, we need to try to address it.
And keeping in mind that, as Noe said, we don't want to dip in and spend all of this to take care of it as well. It's why I asked that question. Thank you, Noe.
And the other thing Dale is, so that's a one-time fix for what could be a continual problem. So how, so we'd have to just, what, kick, kick the can down the road and deal with it next year? Because if, if there's another appraisal thing, if there's going to be this short, I mean, they're going to fight this, this could take five years to fight. I mean, we've still got cases on.
Definitely, but we, we, if we build it into our budget, how we would do this, so we go to next year and there's no increase in valuation, we'll still have to worry about this little level, but it won't be as significant as this year. Because as a, right now, we're talking a four billion dollar increase for those two refineries.
Well, no, it came way down.
Well, it was, it was, they're, they're one point one and one point two, so they're now two-two. So they were, now we're talking about two or three million, three, two or three billion dollar increase.
Three billion is basically.
Oh, between the two of them, you mean. I thought you meant per, 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 per one. Okay.
So that's the one time. Now, next year, if we don't have an increase of that, then we won't be as significant a balance because then our values won't be as, as large of an increase.
So the, the question will be, so you're really projecting more of a seven million dollar straight-up deficit that could be reduced by this? Or are you saying?
I did the evaluation based on our current rate, and that, that's right, right about seven million. But I know because of our evaluation coming in, this, our rate's going to go down. So it's going to be anywhere between three to seven million dollars.
Without this?
Correct.
And then depending on what it comes in at, this could be potentially used for some of it, all of it, whatever, depending on what the court wants to do?
Correct, yes.
But as you said, anticipating next year, that would not be wise. I, I just want to make sure we're all understanding that this is.
Because I think that's important to note, because if we do that, then we're just kicking the can down the road.
Exactly, yes, yes.
We're having the same decision next year. Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean.
I'll, I'll probably propose when we get the balances in, we'll probably still propose, as you're saying, some of our vacancies that we're not able to fill for a long time. Maybe this can be eliminated, which will reduce our, our, our budget levels and reduce our access. And that will cover some of this additional balance, and that will be a continuation. So that one would be something we can definitely evaluate.
Yeah, because I'm.
And I think every department still, we're still going to have to make cuts and we're.
Yeah, I mean, stealing from Peter to pay Paul is not something I like to do.
Me either.
That's all that sounds like to me, that we're just.
But as, as we're aware, as, as you know, before COVID, our, our interest rates were four percent. When COVID came in, our interest rate was point one. It went from four million to thirty thousand dollars.
And that could happen again.
Happened immediately.
Right, I mean, who knows what, yeah, okay.
Sorry, back to you, Noe.
When you talk about using Peter to pay Paul, Peter is slim pickings, as you, as you know. And I'm going to show you that in the next page.
Peter and Paul are both broke.
They're not broke, but they, they could get there pretty quick. So then there's a second document that I sent separately, I think, and, and so we can close this document. And it has to do with how you, how you rank between Neshas County and, and the largest other top twenty-four counties across Texas. And, you know, you're the sixtieth largest county in Texas. You have ratings that are right there at par with, with everyone else. You're about fifteen. Yeah, that's the one. So we put at the bottom of that page, kind of like a ranking row. Anything in yellow, you're pretty much in the middle of, of the, of the field. You're fine. And, and you'll see property values there in, in twenty-two at about fiscal year, I guess fiscal year ended twenty-two, so means last year, at forty billion dollars. And you're fifteen. If, if the values that take place, that, that are being assessed right now or that are being appraised right now come in at higher levels, then that's going to move the needle for you. From a credit standpoint, you're going to find that a lot of those values are going up, literally in a very concentrated sector. And that becomes an issue also for credit rating agencies in that the concentration is too much in, in a couple or a few taxpayers. And that's very common in Texas, especially in the rural counties that rely on, on oil and gas. Where, as you know, that's a commodity that goes up in value, goes down in value from one year to the next. And, and that can present very significant challenges for people like yourselves that are trying to, to provide a very seamless process of tax rates setting and, and property values. So there, the only good thing that is favorable is that your, your geo-debt is still considered stronger than norm. But when you look at the next columns, I'm looking at total geo-debt, you're a hundred and sixty-six million dollars for twenty-twenty-two. This year's going to be less, and as we continue to pay that off, it will be less and less and less. When you look at the next columns, though, the debt as a percent of T A V is point forty-two. You go back to the middle of the field. So even though you have a little debt, you're still pretty much in the middle of the park. If property values go up, that number is going to go down and thus puts you in a stronger position when you look at the ratio of debt as a percent of T A V. Debt per capita is still pretty much middle of the field. That should not go anywhere. On the next call, on the next page, that next page, the only thing in red, it's exactly what we've been talking about, Judge, and that is your fund balance. Your fund balance right now, or as a nine thirty twenty-two, as we reflected earlier in the previous document, was about twenty-five million seven. And there, you're the, you're the twenty-fourth county that has that kind of a number. In other words, there are twenty-three other counties with a stronger fund balance than yours. When you look at that as a percent of revenues, you're still at twenty-four. So when you say, if we add more savings, would that be good? Yes, that would be good. You need to be up. So when I tell you, you need to be a good five million dollars better, you don't have to do it from one year to the next. This takes time. A lot of times, as you and I know, it's sometimes easier to spend the money than to accumulate it. And one of the things that, that is hard in, in, in government, in public government policy is accumulate too much of a reserve and those take time to build. And that's why when you got the downgrade, the, the downgrade was a combination of, of not setting up enough tax rate to build fund balance and yet depleting fund balance pretty quickly. We corrected that. We can do better. We can do more of that correction. What's in very strong green, you go over to the, to the, to the, to the left, you'll see the direct overlapping jurisdictions, meaning all the school districts, community, college, city, you're number nine. In other words, Corpus Christi does not have in the eyes of, of, of lenders. They're not too concerned about your level of debt. As a percent of T A V, you're at five point two percent, which is, you're still number ten compared to others. The M and O tax rate, you're pretty strong at a, at a point twenty-four. You know, there are very few counties with a lower tax rate than yours from an M and O perspective. I N S, you're in the middle of the field, just like we said earlier in the previous page, pretty much in the middle of the field. On the total tax rate, which is the thirty, the twenty-nine point one-six rate, you're number five. There are only four other counties in the state with a better tax rate than yours. And that is Dallas, Tarrant, Collin County, right up here in Dallas, where Plano is. And, and who else am I missing? That's about, that was, that was about it, I guess, three or four counties. So basically, you're in a very strong position there as far as tax rate. If you move up one penny, you'll probably go, if you go two pennies for that matter, now that I'm suggesting, I'm not kidding, you do that, you'll get, you'll get really quickly to the number ten slot. So you're like right in the middle of where you want to be as far as tax rate. And certainly, if property values grow, that's going to help you in generating more general fund revenue, which is the next column at a hundred and three million. And, you know, there's been a big issue across the country about unfunded pension liabilities. The county has, continues to be pretty, pretty strong there, so your liability is pretty minimal. And it seems like your pension fund is, is, is acting well. And that pretty much completes everything from my perspective.
Is there any other questions, commissioners? Any comments? Is there any other questions, commissioners? Any comments? I know we have a lot to do. This is a challenge for us. It's an unprecedented time. This is, while this information we seem to be getting from the tax appraisal service, it's gonna make it a lot easier for us. I hate to say "a lot easier" cuz we need to also understand that while it makes it a little bit easier, we still have to be prudent, and we have to move forward and make cuts and prepare for next year and the year after, and, and as you said, hurricane or anything else. So I, I think this was a great presentation, and I think going forward and everything that we have to decide in the next few, a couple of months, basically, and next few weeks. We thank you very much. I know you were here before and you didn't get to talk to us, but I, I greatly appreciate you taking the time, Noe, and the presentation was beneficial.
You bet, ma'am. And if there's anything that I, we can do as a team, as a firm, to help you with the budget process and setting that tax rate, we stand at your, at your call.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Chesney wants to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Dale that I forgot, when you're factoring in that deficit, I think you need to look too and remember that we have, I believe, 14 people that are funded on ARPA funds that eventually will run out. And that needs to be at least put on that list because we need to make some decisions on those positions and what that would add to the deficit as well. Because we're, we're, you know, we're fast, quickly running out of ARPA funds and we're, we're getting to that point. So if you'll also include that in your analysis, I would appreciate it.
Most, most definitely we will, on, on that, as, as well as other, uh, because we're still working with the collective bargaining agreement and on that coming up and what the effect that will have on the, on the accounts as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a whole nother, yeah.
It could be one year, it could, it could be two years. Depends how we look at it.
It could be how long, because we, we just had a resolution from Flint Hills, went, went back to 2018. So they, they saw for three or four years, and so we'll get a little bit of extra money from them, I don't know the exact amount of that yet. So, so that's gonna be a little bit of extra revenue coming in soon, but Valero's still fighting from 18 to 22. So we know the rest will be from the forward, it could take anywhere from five to seven years.
I'm talking about the ARPA funds, employees.
Oh, yeah, yeah, ARPA funds, yes.
A year, two years, one of those two.
Well, if we have any money left, that's the thing.
I, I, Noe, if you're still there, I, I just wanna thank you for.
Yes, sir.
Always providing very thorough reports. You're, I mean, I think it's almost every presentation that you give us, when you took, look at the taxable appraisal value, the MNO and INS, and when you break it down by each county in the top 25, and show us where an Oasis County ranks, it's eye-opening, it's, it's affirming in some areas that we're doing really well, it's an eye-opener in others where we need to improve. You know, we've always kind of, I don't wanna say always, but where we started, when I first got on this commissioner's court, we were much lower in our general fund balance, and that we've worked our way up to that. And think, okay, the number's always kind of been like 25 million, we're good. And then when we look at where we rank compared to the top 25, we're at 24. So we have some work to do there, and, and this may not be the year to do it, right? We're just in a very difficult time, but once again, compared to other areas that we are doing much better, I think it gives us a chance to be able to show the community, show the public, just black and white, where we stand with these numbers. And there's no, there's no way to, to spin them one way or the other if we're not doing well in certain areas, like the general fund balance. But we can show in some of the areas where we're in the top five, top 10. Those are the areas that we really need to kind of bring to the public's attention, cuz that's all part of looking at how we approach our budgets and how, how have we handled them over the years, based on our auditor's department, based on decisions that this court has made. And so it's not to, to pat ourselves on the back, but it's just, once again, it's just a reminder of where we stand. And so I think, you know, your analysis is one of the most thorough that we ever get on a regular basis. I know you come before us as needed, sometimes at least, you know, two or three times throughout the year. But this is always refreshing to kind of remind us where we stand, and, and that, that's helpful for us going into this budget process.
Thank you, Commissioner Modas. I think, I think from time to time, don't, don't discount your focused efforts in trying to do the best thing you can do with what you got. I think it's fair to say that sometimes we get in our own little box. And some, sometimes it's good to get you out of that box so you can see what others are doing. I don't want you comparing yourself with the Joneses, but at the end of the day, it's always good to keep an eye on what others are seeing because that's what the investor who's lending you money to do your capital projects is looking at. If I, if I'm gonna lend you money and I care about capital preservation, well, I wanna put my money where I know I can get repaid, right? And, and you guys have done during some very difficult times in the past, and, and God forbid, in the future, you've done the best you can with what you got, and, and thank you for the opportunity you've given us over the years to be of service to you.
No, Noe, this is Commissioner Hernandez. No, I just, I just wanna thank you cuz you always explain everything well to us, to where it's easier, at least for me, to understand where you're coming from, what you're trying to tell us, and I'm sure the public also appreciates that cuz they also understand. So thank you, Noe, for that, and I appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll let you leave now. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Judge. Bye-bye. Have a great afternoon. Stay, stay cool, please.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chesney has asked me if I could move up items 12 and 13, cuz we have people back there waiting. We're gonna go to item 12, discuss and consider allocating 20,000 to the Oasis County Veterans Service Department for the Reefs Across America Veterans Program from Precinct 4 ARPA funds. These are from Commissioner Chesney's ARPA funds, so.
I've just, pardon me? No, we just did it for one year. I'm just, I'm just doing this so that it's taken care of for the next two years, and that we don't have to worry about it. And so I, I'm happy to do that, and I'd make that motion to pass that.
Everybody's willing to do that one, yes. We have a.
We don't have any money.
We have a motion and a second.
I'm just willing to do, I think, I, I just don't wanna put anything extra in the budget this year, but I wanna make sure these project, projects are funded. Especially while we're moving down the road in probably a couple, three uncertain, uncertain budget years, it sounds like.
And Lulu, do we, do we have to get any additional funding vetted? Like, I mean, I'd like to contribute to that. I think this is worth it, and maybe, maybe split it with you or add so that we can.
Four more years?
At least add a couple more years, cuz we know that we still have that 2026 stop, at least on the ARPA funding. But, I mean, I'd like to help with both of those items, if it means splitting up the costs with Commissioner or adding more, I'd like to do that.
On the second one, we'll talk about it in just a second because that would change into a different. Not the 20.
Not the 20.
I was talking on the second one, not item 13.
Right, but this is, this is to Oasis County Veterans Services Department, so that's, so if John wanted to add, say, 26, for 20,000 for 26, that would be fine, cuz it's not going to an, an outside group, right?
To the Veterans Department, yes, it is allowed.
So you could add, you could add 20,000 if you wanted to, John, for 26, and then that way it'd be three years of coverage that we know. Cuz, and this was the amount that JJ told me.
And that's as far as we can go, cuz it has to all be spent by 26, yes.
That'd be great, Commissioner. As you know, every year we have the annual Reefs Across America ceremony. Every year, we inter 700 new dependents and veterans at the cemetery, so that means more reeves every single year, so that would be great.
I, I would be happy to amend my motion to accept Commissioner Modas's 20,000 for the year 26, if that's what he wants to do.
Yes, please.
From his ARPA funds. I'm not trying to, I know, but y'all, well, but y'all have given, y'all.
I thought it was gonna be part of the budget, but it's not gonna be part of the budget, then I wouldn't, then I wouldn't.
Well, but y'all, and y'all had given to the VFWs, and I, I tried to get one of the VFWs, and we couldn't, we couldn't locate one of the VFWs in my precinct. So I was just doing this to spend some, some money on veterans for, so if you wanna add, great, but y'all have done your share. I just, this was me playing catch-up a little bit because I wasn't able to find a VFW to support like y'all did in your precincts. So, but I appreciate Mr. Modas adding that on, and.
So the motion would be that you would be allocating 20 and?
No, I would be allocating 20 for 24 and 25, and Commissioner Modas would do 20 for 26. Or, yeah, just to keep it simple.
Okay.
I think someone seconded that. That would be my amendment.
We have a motion and a second. Several people seconded it, yeah, John Modas. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Is that clear, Lorenzo? That's good.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, we appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate the program.
And then the next item, 13, discuss and consider allocating ARPA Precinct 4 funds in the amount of 49,500 as a one-time allocation to the Veterans Band of Corpus Christi Nonprofit and related matters. And this has to stay under, this is like one of our beneficiary amounts.
It does have to stay under the $50,000 threshold, that is correct.
Unless y'all wanted to split the 49.
No, I mean, again, same concept, I'm, I'm always happy to split, but I just, I, I, I had checked with JJ and said, you know, I was trying to find some money to, to put towards the, the veterans organizations, and he came up with this suggestion. And of course, Ram's here, and we all know the, the great value that Ram Chavez and the Veterans Band has provided this community for decades. And so I'm, I'm happy to, to do this, and wanted to make sure and get this done in an easier way than having to make them go through the nonprofit allocation, funding and all that. I just did it this way, so, but.
Okay, well, they do need a SAM.gov. I mean, that it's mandatory, so I think that's where it lags on time as far as receiving that UIE number.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just making the allocation. I'll figure y'all will work out the paperwork, or assuming the court will approve it. I know the court supports this strongly, and, and as have I have supported them in their efforts to support veterans. I think, you know, with this and everything else that every commissioner and the judge has done, I think that if this court hasn't expressed its support for veterans in many, many different ways, I, I don't, I don't know how much more we can do. I mean, we, we can never do enough for, for the veterans and what they have done for this country. But we, we, I know we all share in every vote that we take, this may be coming out of my funds, just like Commissioner Modas, Hernandez, Gonzalez, Judge Scott. They've all committed some out of theirs, but we all, this is from all of us, is the way I look at it. This is just an allocation that comes from, from my particular funds. But everything we do up here is a vote of, of support for the veterans, and, and I would make the motion to pass that. And Ram, if Ram wants to talk, happy to do that, too.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes from Mr. Chavez.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Uh, I just wanted to say, Commissioner Modas, Burnbit's 360 is still working on theirs. I just talked to them yesterday, so you may have that opportunity still, so.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, on behalf of our 40-member roster. I wanna thank you for this wonderful funding. You know, we're on our 38th year. And a lot of people may not be aware, they just see us, they just see the, the fun part. What they don't realize is that over 20 years ago, the city gave us a house at Heritage Park, the Buddy Lawrence House, which is a rehearsal room. We have to maintain it, so that's, that's gonna help us. We always pay our bills, but mostly with prayers, you know? But, and we all have a equipment truck, one of our members donated for 38 years, three different trucks. And we buy a tire once in a while for him, you know, change the oil. It doesn't run on one tire, but we give him a tire, help him out, so this helps us. And the Rochelle Foundation, we didn't even request it, called me one day and they gave us a 16-passenger van, which we now have to maintain insurance on, but it doesn't carry 16 passengers, because we carry eight with a baritone tuba, and then it closes out, so, but it helps us. The point being that we do have uniforms, flags, replacement instrument, this is gonna help us. So we want you to know that it really comes at a great time because we have always paid our bills, but with a lot of praying. Now, we're not gonna stop praying. We're not gonna stop praying, but I wanna thank you, each and every one of you, because you have always continued to support veterans, and that's why we're here. And the reason we're here 38 years is because we've done a lot of good things and a lot of right things. And we thank you from the bottom of our heart, sincerely. Please always call on us, we're always here. I didn't bring the band because we've been playing a lot. We haven't stopped. And we planned outside at a funeral for Monday, it was pretty hot. And so, and not knowing how long it would take today, I thought I, I hit the, by myself. They've been texting me all morning, how's it going? So I wanna thank you on behalf of the Veterans Band, and please come by and see us when we perform. In case you're around, we'll be performing tomorrow at a nursing home, close to O'Brien's Road, where they have the majority of veterans. And then Saturday, we'll be in Centon, San Patricio County. Unless you, did you go Sunday? No, I'm just kidding. And then Monday, we'll be doing some other things, and then next week, because we're gonna take a break due in August, three weeks, and just do some minor things, because we've been going nonstop. We have been going nonstop. We have never canceled an event, so I want you to know that, only by weather or by the decision. So I wanna thank you, and we'll continue, and we're still going strong. And just to let you know, on November the 11th, we have three events, we'll do two in the morning, but in the evening, we will be at the Whataburger Field, playing alongside the Corpus Christi Symphony Orchestra.
Oh, wow.
Ooh.
Wow, nice.
And we have some other neat things that are happening throughout the year, but I just wanted to mention that to, to let you know how, how strong we're still going on 38 years. We're gonna hit 40. So I'll, I'll see you then. Thank you, and God bless you, and you guys, I don't know how you do it. It was tough just sitting back there and watching you, so congratulations on your job. Thank you, each and every one, and the staff.
Ram, thank you very much for all that you and your band have done for all these years, and we know you're the heart and soul of that, but I know there's many, many people. So I know this court's super happy to support you and everything you've done, so thank you very much. God bless.
You're welcome.
Number five.
Thank you, Ram.
I'm going back to item number five, discuss and consider selection of international consulting engineers for engineering services under the master service contract for the following ARPA-funded projects. Commissioner Gonzalez, these are yours, and I think we moved them forward. This support is in the back.
Did I just make a motion that we approved? We got an engineer.
Yes.
So we were to move forward on Teja Grande and Belt Lane.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Item number six is the same, discuss and consider selection of Gov'n Development LLC.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna table it for the next meeting?
Table for the next.
Yeah, I think there, there's some other things we need to.
Second.
Add here.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling this to the second meeting, say aye.
Aye.
And you were talking the second meeting next month, or the next meeting?
The first meeting in August.
The first meeting in August, okay, yes.
Second, his motion for next meeting in August. August, yeah.
And just as a note for us, commissioners and our offices, when we table something like that, I think we missed one last time. When we table, it just goes back into the whole rule. So if you present an item, please have your staff reach out and re-present that item so that it doesn't get left off of the next meeting as well. It helps us, cuz there's a lot of things get moved around, and we're trying to watch, and we try to bring everything up, but it would help us a lot if you would do that.
And on number seven, Judge, I'm gonna go ahead and move to table seven, one only.
Seven, one.
And vote on number two and three.
Till what? Till when?
Till the next meeting, the ninth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table item number seven, one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
I make a motion to approve two and three of seven.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve seven, two, and seven, three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Yeah, number eight, Judge, I wanna make, make a motion that we table number eight, three.
Eight, three.
Till the next meeting?
Till August the ninth.
Second.
Yeah, you better make sure your office re-prints. It's tabling, we have a motion and a second to table item eight, three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion now is to approve one and two of eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item eight, one, and two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, discuss and consider the selection of international consulting engineers for engineering and construction rehabilitation of County Road 18 Bridge located at the intersection of County Road 18 and County Road 65, and other related matters.
Yeah, this is my item. I don't know one, I don't know if one, one was gonna be here, but. But anyway, this is a, a bridge that's in my area, in Precinct 2. And Techstat owns, Techstat owns, like, Techstat actually owns the top part of the bridge, which is the road. And they, they're gonna fix it, but it probably won't be for the two years. And if it falls. And if it falls, it's not gonna be because of the road, it's gonna be because of the bottom. The bottom of the bridge is deteriorating, and Techstat has sent a letter to Public Works saying that it's dangerous.
Wants here to.
Needs to be fixed, you know, and that, but we, of course, this bridge, the bottom of the bridge actually belongs to Drainage District number two, and we have documentation that it does. So I'm trying to work with Drainage District number two to fix it, but it's taking too long, and and if something happens, it's gonna be, fall back on me, because it's in my precinct, and the first thing they're gonna say, well, you should have done something about him. The problem right now, Public Works has blocked it off, and used barricades, but the problem there is that the farmers continue to remove the barricades to get through there, and don't put the barricade bag, so if something happened, it's gonna fall back on us. So I met with Teresa, and we talked about this, I have monies that I want to do, use my monies to to repair the bottom of the bridge, and eventually maybe re-submit an invoice to Drainage District number two to see if they want to reimburse us for those expenses. Whichever it is, I mean, we need to move forward on it before something happens out there, why, do you want to kind of give a little bit on Techstat?
Yes, Judge and Commissioner, good morning. Yeah, the bridge was inspected by Techstat approximately a couple of months, and the bridge has been closed already for about a month and a half. And then, it's just some repairs that need to be done to the abutment due to some scouring, and like Commissioner said, it does need to get fixed, so we can open it up to the constituents out there, and also, we already got some people that are calling about when we're gonna open up the bridge. We have some farmers and constituents with some concerns about having access.
I'm sorry.
I, go ahead, sorry.
So really, what the issue here is that they have waited for a while for to get this thing done with District Drainage two, District Drainage number two, and I think eventually they will, you know, and we've got some documentation where these bridges were actually given to Drainage District number two by, at that time, County Judge Terry Chamsy, and although they show that they, in paper they show that they own a hundred and sixty bridges, but I think it's really like sixty bridges, but and this is one of those bridges that's on the channel, on the drainage that belongs to them, that, so, so anyway, this, I just want to make sure that nothing happens before, and whether the Commissioners Court approves it or not, that.
I would like a second, I absolutely agree with you, Commissioner, in the safety issue, and it is, and the county, I think the only stipulation that I was told about this, and maybe we pass with that stipulation, is our interlocal with them has expired, we would have to do another one in order to send them an invoice for them to pay, but I do believe in the urgency of fixing something that's out there, I know, as you said this morning, there's a barrier out there, but every farm person out there moves a barrier and goes on that bridge, and something happens, and we're all gonna be tied up in liability and everything else, so I have no problem with moving forward if we add the stipulation that we work on that interlocal getting a current win.
Yeah, just to remind Jeannie, the interlocal agreement we have now, Jeannie, is for them to do repairs for us, we reimburse them.
Right.
Right, so, this local agreement, here's gonna be for us to do the repairs, for them to reimburse us.
Okay, we're, we've been circulating several interlocal agreements through the past year or two in this area, I'm not sure if what we've been circulating covers this particular bridge, do you have a, an identifier for this bridge by number?
Twenty-five, I think it's bridge twenty-five.
This is number twenty-five, okay, then we can work on that with DD two and see if they're willing to enter into that agreement, and you're saying that the repairs are contingent upon them entering into that agreement, correct?
No, I'm saying that we're gonna do the repairs, whether they agree or not, we need to do the repairs.
Okay, so we need to look at the issue of the county doing the repairs on what is, we know to be DD two property?
Who's property, again?
Drainage District two, and so without that agreement in place, we may have some.
Well, they don't claim it, I mean, they keep telling me that it's not theirs, and.
Well, then, do we need to, do we need to, not annex it, we can't annex, do we need, is there a way for us to domain it to where it becomes ours? Or, so maybe they'll give it to us, maybe they'll deed it to us, since they don't want it anyway? Well, right, I'm just saying, if we're gonna be paying for it, and it sounds like we're gonna be keeping this up.
Well, just to clarify, Judge and Commissioners, that, this bridge is gonna get replaced by Techstat, a hundred percent funding to replace this bridge in about a year, maybe about a year and a half. So it's part of the resolution that was passed a couple of months, a couple of weeks ago.
Last court we passed.
And the bridge will, it's already part in the design process.
Oh, then hold on, do we want to do that?
By the time they designed it, and by the time they constructed, you're looking about a year to about a year and a half with Techstat.
And so how much would it cost to do this?
Forty-nine thousand.
I think forty-nine thousand.
And this is just kind of a temporary fix, knowing that it's going away and going into something else, okay? I don't know how, I mean, I'd say, if Commissioner Gonzalez feels that important, and he's got the funding, then we could pass it contingent to, contingent upon whatever legal.
On being able to spend the money on that particular piece of bridge.
Yeah, contingent upon legal signing off on being able to spend that money, is that how you want to say it, Jeannie, or how do you want to say it? Why don't you tell me?
Yes, we need to, we need the information to identify the bridge, we've got twenty-five, make sure that that that's something that the county can spend its money on.
So how do you want to make the motion? How do you want to?
I believe how you said it.
Okay, so.
Make a motion that, I mean, I'm gonna go ahead and use my funds right now to repair Bridge twenty-five underneath, not the road, underneath where it's deteriorating, and try to reimburse them from Drainage District number two, if they're actually the real owners of that bridge.
And Commissioner, your source of funds is the twenty-fifteen COs, so we need to make sure if we need an interlocal or not, because this is not, if it's not our bridge, then you may not be able to use those COs, so.
Right, but then it would be subject to the, and that would be where you'd add the language, if it's okay, subject to legal signing off on it, being available to use and able to be used.
Twenty, I believe, twenty-fifteen COs or all COs are gonna be specifically for county property, but, but we'll look at it and see what we can find, Commissioner.
And do you have another funding source as an alternative?
I think I have another funding source, there is a.
So then we would want to make this motion a little more expansive, or in other words, indicates not only those funds or whatever precinct.
I still have some to Captain Oddly.
You have General Capital.
Yeah.
Whatever precinct, three funds are available, or precinct two, sorry, my bad.
I know.
Okay, well, either one of those.
Contingent to that and using either one of those funds, yes.
I just don't want to, I just don't want to go on record that we didn't do it.
Yes.
Is that, is that clear enough for you?
Is that a motion, that's good, we have a motion and a second?
Able to use the CO fifteen, however, if not, use precinct funds.
His precinct, two funds?
Two funds.
Okay, right, okay.
You made the motion, you seconded it, or who motioned and seconded?
I made the motion.
Yes, and the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, thank you. We're gonna come back to item number ten in a little while. Item number eleven, discuss and consider allocating seventy thousand additional ARPA precinct four funds to Parker Pool project, Commissioner Chesney?
Judge, this is my item, I'm just adding for my precinct four ARPA funds to the funds already allocated for Parker Pool, and so I would make the motion to approve that.
I'll second that, we have a motion and a.
Second.
A motion and a second.
What happened to ten?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. Item number.
You would do ten?
We skipped it, he wants to come back, he asked me to bring it to the end. On item, we're at item number fourteen, and I, it's receive updated ARPA balances for precinct and countywide projects. I would like to, if we get a unanimous vote, take this matter into executive under five-five-one dot zero seven-two-five. The court would have a five-oh vote, whether pursuant to Texas Government Code deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the Commissioners Court and the negotiations with the named entities, and I believe that's because of contracts, and then the private information on the entities that we are negotiating with, but I need a motion, I'll make the motion, I need a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, as, since we're just four of us here, does that work, or do we need all five of us?
No. Judge, you're gonna need that fifth.
We need Commissioner Matas when he gets back.
You need a five-oh vote for this to go into executive under five-five-one oh seven-two-five.
So what happens if someone's not here?
You can't do it, wow, he's back, can we get a five-oh vote, we have a motion and a second to take this, item number fourteen, into executive session under five-five-one dot zero seven-two-five. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. And it is almost noon, and this would be our only item, we would be taking there, would y'all want to go on to executive now?
I see.
Keep on moving.
Keep going and come back to it, we're fine. Item number fifteen, oh, no, we would have to wait on these, because everything hinges on, this one had to be done first, so we can skip those and go to item number seventeen.
Okay.
Discuss and consider the upcoming Commissioners Court meetings, dates, budget workshops, I believe in your packets, or here's an additional paper that shows the workshop dates were added.
Thank you.
I think everybody's had these dates for a while, so there shouldn't be any change in any of that. If anybody has any questions or anything, are we good to move on to?
Judge, I guess, I just have a question as to whether or not we want to, are we just gonna, I guess we can just, on the August ninth meeting, just have, you know, budget, I mean, because we still don't really know what we're dealing with, when will we do, when do we want to do that? I mean, that's, when's that gonna be ready?
I would like to see if I can work with you and then the court on this issue, once we, we've got the values coming in, once we get the rates calculated, I'd like to try to schedule a meeting with the court to do something before these, so we know where we stand on the rates, where we stand on values, that way we can have a true budget workshop meeting on the fourteenth and seventeenth.
What if we, what if we, just a suggestion, since we've got an August ninth meeting, what if we set a budget workshop for the morning of the ninth, and then started our regular meeting, you know, maybe an hour, hour and a half later, just so that people don't show up and sit around that don't want to be here for the budget workshop, would that be?
Now, the ninth, I've got several doctor's appointments for my recovery, so I won't be here on the ninth, but Lisa will be here, so she'll be able to address any questions you might have, but if you'd prefer me to be here, I can't be there on the ninth.
On August the ninth, you actually received the calculations, so do y'all want it to meet prior to the ninth, or?
I don't know, I don't know when Dale's gonna get it, I mean, that's, I mean, we received the calculations, but the calculations.
The numbers, the numbers that they're gonna work on.
Right, so we could do the workshop in the morning and then the meeting, so we would kind of get the calculations at the workshop, be able to kind of think about it a little bit, then start the meeting, but if he's not gonna be here.
I am not sure we're gonna, that August the ninth is also a hearing that one of the industry has a mediation, so I'm not sure we're gonna have those that all finalized.
We have to have them, don't we, I mean, that, it's not, it's not contingent on their hearing, right, or could that change?
We have to go by the values that the appraisal district provide to us, so we have to use those as your true valuations, now, once we do the final certified rate, when they actually will give the information to the tax office through the calculation, these will be taken consideration, so that number can go up and down, and we usually come to court with those at later times saying, because of this situation, we expect you to see, now receive this much more money.
So these calculations on the ninth could be changed?
They won't.
I mean, depending on what happens.
Well, it won't change our, it won't change our known revenue tax number, our voter-approved numbers, that, those won't change. It'll just change what the certified rule, what the levy gets from the tax office.
So the August ninth, let's just say for sake of discussion, they have this mediation or whatever they have on the ninth, and they resolve everything, don't think that's, you know, necessarily gonna happen, but that wouldn't affect us?
That will not affect us, because we have to use the.
We'd still have to go with the numbers that we've got now.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
That's, well, no, it was a good, I've just never been through this either, so I truly was asking, because I wasn't sure.
I know Kevin was trying to get that pushed through the legislative session where we could do that, but that didn't pass.
Right.
You're stuck with our numbers.
Other than Dale not being here, I would be okay with doing a workshop that morning and then going into the meeting, but if we want to do it.
Now, Lisa will be very briefed on all the information, so she'll, she's a very good person for the information, but again, I've got three doctor's appointments that I can't change.
I totally understand that, but, I mean, we could, I guess, unless y'all want to do it on the eighth or something, and have a day to think about them going into the ninth.
So you're saying the ninth, do you want the presentation itself?
Well, yeah.
What we have.
Yeah, the, kind of as a workshop for what Dale's gonna present to us, but the certified numbers.
Would Lisa have that information to give to us, or is this?
Lisa will have that information, yes, we all have that information, yes, yes.
Or we could have it on the afternoon, the eighth, I don't, I'm just throwing it out there, I mean.
We're already meeting on the ninth, we might as well just do it, like you said, and have a couple hours in the morning.
Lisa will be well versed on this, because her and I want to do the calculation in our office, so both of us will be well versed on the numbers.
Okay, and again, I'm just throwing it out there, but if someone wants to change it, please feel free, then I would make a motion that we have budget workshop to make that presentation on August ninth, starting at nine AM, and that the regular meeting would start at eleven AM? That okay with everybody? Just conversation.
No problem, I'm fine with that, I'll second it, yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion, everybody good, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I guess, aye.
Workshop nine AM.
Do you have that, Teresa, for our office?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Moving on to item B one, Public Works, discuss and consider approving a funding source for the construction of a second courtroom for county court at law number five and architectural fees associated with this project and related matters. Do you want to talk about it first, before I ask my questions?
No, go ahead, Judge.
I know it was brought to our attention that apparently it was voted on, and the original approved amount for this court was sixty thousand, but the increase has come to now, they need an additional hundred and eighteen thousand.
That, that's correct.
Yes, and we couldn't find anywhere who authorized this, or court ordered, or how this number changed, and.
Yeah, what happened?
That's huge.
Yes, sir, I understand. Initially, this was a project last year timeframe, and initially, it was just gonna be furniture, chairs, and relocating some walls, so that's the reason why the budget was low at that time. But now with the requirement, with the request from one of the judges for it to be six inches higher from the other floor, that creates a ADA issue, so when that comes around, then you have to start moving walls, you have to start going into some other offices, so that's the reason for the increasing cost.
So, I mean, I'm gonna make, I don't want to quash discussion, but I think we, I think we should table this and really think about this, because how do we, we're sitting here talking about cutting everything, and now you want to add a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the price.
For six inches?
Holy crap.
Yes, yes, when you raise the elevation of that court area, then you have to encroach into other rooms and start moving doors, and start moving walls, and start.
That's what I'm saying, it's quite a bit of money and work for just six inches.
Yes, sir.
And let me declare too, in your, in your comments, it's like, this was not because it's ADA required, it's because they raised it, then it caused it to be an ADA issue.
That's correct, Judge, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So, didn't we already fund the first sixty or whatever it was?
My understanding.
Yeah, from the two thousand nineteen COs.
Yeah, I, again, unless, I'm not trying to jump the gun, so if anybody wants to talk about it before I make a motion to table, let me, I don't want to.
Second.
I think that's clear.
Yeah, I'm gonna say indefinitely, y'all, you've got to go back and work with the. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna say indefinitely, y'all, you've gotta go back and work with the, I mean, we don't have an extra hundred and ten lying around.
We have a motion and a second to table this until you come back. With something better. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Purchasing, just item C one, discuss and consider method of procurement for engineering services for Padre Bay and I.B. McGee Beach Parks and improvements under the Restore Act grant.
Thank you, Commissioner and Judges. Our recommend, recommendation is to approve method of procurement for engineering services for Padre Bay and I.B. McGee Beach Park improvements under Restore Act funds and authorize purchasing agent to publish a notice. Expense to be paid with project code two-seven-two-eight-two-oh-two-four, I.B. McGee Padre Bay Restore Coastal Park recommends approval.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, my bad, my apologies, Judge.
Motion, do we have a second?
For discussion, yes.
Yes, uh-huh.
I am looking at the designated committee members on this one and I would like to make some changes on that. Currently, it has the Commissioners Court Administrator, Administration Manager. I don't think that that one is necessary on this because we have Coastal Parks Director. But I'd also like to add at least one member of the Coastal Parks Board. It can be, I would say, the Chair and/or his designee to be on this in place of the Commissioners Court Administration Manager and.
What are you looking at? I don't.
This is the order of the Commissioners Court. It's our backup on the makeup on this.
Oh.
It's just a, it's a, it's the selection of the companies to provide licensed professional engineering service. And, and actually, I'd like to also add the, the county engineer to this. I think having an engineer to help with that and Juan, are you okay? I don't mean, I don't want to just shove it to you, but, I mean, we're picking engineers and I think it would be good to have an engineer on that committee. So I would make a motion that we change the order to take off the Commissioners Court Administration Manager and add the Public Works Director and, and/or his designee, as long as it's an engineer, right? Can only be an engineer, Coastal Parks Director. And then the third one would be the Chairman of the Coastal Parks Board and/or his designee of another board member.
Is it back there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's behind there.
It's on C one, three C one. It's just the order, just the. And this is all, this is all Restore Act funding and not coming out of the general fund, just so everybody knows. So this is, this was grant money that we received. It took years for us to get and we're just now putting it in place the way we need to put it in place to comply with the grant funding and get that in place and spend it, go through our procurement. So I think, that was a motion. I don't know if I got a second or not.
Second.
We have a motion and a second with those changes to that board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item number C two, discuss and consider conditional selection of Vulcan construction materials for aggregate type PB grade three SLRA. And I believe this is just the material that we use throughout the year that you just, is this another one of those things like that? That Public Works uses when necessary?
That's correct.
And I was wondering about the funding source for this.
It's from our Road and Bridge Fund.
Road and Bridge Fund. And I know there was some other discussions that came up on the Road and Bridge Fund. Is there, is there balance in there? I thought we had, we, is that, is there plenty of money there for that? For next year? I know we reallocate, but given the situation we're in, I just want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am. Once, once the, the budget is set, then we'll just purchase as, as needed.
As needed.
Yes.
Within the budget, whatever you're given, yes. I just wanted to clarify because I know we've, we've done that a few times and I'm like, you do have to still make sure it's within.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the PB three is just for our surface treatment, Judge.
Okay. I'll make a motion to.
Second.
Yes, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. And item number three is similar. Discuss and consider conditional selection of ergon asphalt in emulsions for HFRS dash two emulsified asphalt. And same thing.
Yep.
Yes. I'll make a motion for that one as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Hernandez, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Discussing, number four, discuss and consider award and execution of an agreement with.
Argendeki.
Thank you, Argendeki Oil Company, liquid for bulk diesel and unleaded fuel. And this expense is paid out of the user department's budgeted funds, so every department pays whatever they use.
Yes.
Yes.
So on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, Commissioners Court conditionally selected Argendeki Oil. This item is to approve the resulting contract. Recommendation is to award and execute an agreement with Argendeki for bulk diesel and unleaded fuel. County engineer recommends approval.
Motion to pass.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item number five, discuss and consider authorizing and approving a cooperative contract purchase with Coastal Office Solutions under Omnia Partners in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents for the District Attorney's Office furniture and this is funded by their Justice Assistance Grant Funds.
That's correct. Recommendation is to authorize and approve a cooperative contract purchase with Coastal Office Solutions under the Omnia Partners contract for the District Attorney's Office furniture funded by the Justice Administration Assistance Grants. District Attorney recommends approval.
So I'll move.
I'll second that. A motion and a second to pass. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number six, discuss and consider conditional selection of South Texas Building Partners for Nuasis County's sixth floor renovations for the Public Defender's Office.
So a proposal opening was conducted on July thirteenth. Two bids were received. Recommendation is to conditionally select the low bidder, South Texas Building Partners, Inc. in the amount of four hundred twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars for Nuasis County's sixth floor renovation. Letter of recommendation from C.L.K. Architects and Associates has been received and the county engineer recommends approval.
I have a question about that one. I know initially, and I went back and looked at the court, we had initially thought in the preliminary estimates was gonna be like three-twenty-five. I think Commissioner Chesney mentioned, let's go ahead and do three-seventy-five. And then Commissioner Gonzalez and myself said, let's go ahead and make it four. So we allocated four hundred thousand for this. Is there a way to go back to this contractor and tell him, can you make cuts? We're only allocating the four hundred thousand that was voted on by this court. Can you make this work within that budget?
I believe Juan can negotiate, do some.
Yes, yeah. I, I mean, unless the court just is okay with going over, I just thought we had initially said three-twenty-five and we've already gone up. That's another hundred thousand, so.
Right, we allocated this and we allocated the same amount to redo. That's, that's what I based the other allocation on. And we brought that up was for the, the veteran services and the social services that we're bringing back. So we allocated, it was, it was specifically four hundred thousand for each. I mean, we can, court can always change what it wants to do, but I don't.
Well, I think if you can negotiate with them, I would prefer to go back. I know when you're remodeling your house or anything else, we go back and tell them, okay, that's all the money I have, make it work, you know?
Yeah, 'cause, I mean.
Yeah. I think in the situation we're in, let's, let's do that first.
Judge, Commissioner, we can value engineer once it's awarded, we can do a value engineer.
They would be willing to do that.
What's he okay and also the contractor?
Yeah, I mean, so do we need to do conditional, conditioning, conditional upon the value engineering? Because we don't, we don't have a, a funding source for this amount. So what, what can we do legally? Jenny, I guess we can do it.
If they would approve, if they would.
I mean, there may be twenty-nine thousand dollars where you, we may have to cut fifteen, they have to cut fourteen. I, I don't know. I mean, but I mean.
Depending on the, the variation up or down, I think that's gonna be a fact, you know, question that Juan is gonna have to help us with. But this is just conditional selection, so I believe we can negotiate that.
This, this just allows us to start.
Wait a minute, that's not what the discussion says. The discussion says in the amount of, so it's not a conditional selection. It is to conditionally select in the amount of. So that's what.
We would have to say no to that amount if we want them to negotiate.
No, I mean, or, or we can, I mean, I just want to.
Just conditionally select without listing an amount?
If we can do that, that's, conditionally select based on the ability to get within our budget.
Yeah.
I mean, if we can do that, Jenny, that's fine, but that's not what the discussion item says.
I think we'd have to, did the bid go out? The bid that was posted? Was it, is, does that amount listed there have anything to do with the bid paperwork that went out?
It, that was the bid amount.
That they've sent in or that we sent out?
No, that's.
So what, the county published, so I, I don't think you have to.
And the two bids that came in on that were like strikingly not even close.
Yeah, two or three times as much as the low bidder.
Nowhere near the same, I mean, unbelievably not even.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Not even remotely close.
So if you just do conditional selection and then we're unable to negotiate it near a price that you want, then, then you can just start over.
Okay.
Okay.
Are y'all okay with that? I'll make the motion to conditionally select with the negotiation to see if they will keep within our budget. Yes. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Moving on to D, Auditor's Office, item one, authorize renewal of Texas DIR contract for VertaSoft for Open Gov Software. Fifty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars from the twelve-fifty funds. I believe this is budgeted in your.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a budgeted amount. This is our, our software we use for our budget processes. We'll only do, this will be a one-time only, one more year only for this particular software and we'll be going to our, our, software we're going to in the, in the future. And this will be a one-time event next year, this amount will go away. But we have, this is already budgeted in our accounts, as is.
Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. D two, approve budget change order number eighteen for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes, Your Honor, we have a few items here that are, are in large amounts. We'll just go through those particular items for the Sheriff's Office. They're trying to bring in some temporary because of all the vagance they have. And they have some savings in the regular salaries they can use to move that cost. For the medical examiner, when everything was approved through ARPA as well, because in their office with, with their investigators, all the investigators require a car allowance and that was not in that budget amount. So they're just moving the balances around and they do have some salary savings to cover this cost of that amount. The only other issue is on, on the following page, on page two, which we do with Road and Bridge. Road and Bridge has a lot of older equipment that's, that's needing a lot of repair and the repair on that old equipment gets very expensive. And I know Juan continually puts in the budget requests each year to, to get some of this equipment replaced. And we try to do that each year, but unfortunately, some of this time it breaks and these equipment needs to be repaired and the sixty thousand dollars is needed to do the repair. So with that, I present a budget change order number eighteen for your acceptance and approval.
Motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Three D three, approve capital budget change order one, two, three.
There's only two items, one for the two thousand sixteen COs and one for the two thousand nineteen certificated obligation funds. For the two thousand sixteen funds, we're just, have County Road Seventy-Nine Culverts Project that we were talking, we're just moving some money from precinct ones funds, so thirty-two hundred dollars. We've got the signed form for that. We also, for the two thousand nineteen, the jail elevators are needing some of the balances and we're using those from just regular unallocated funds. These are the balances we worked with Teresa and myself and, and the people that, that needed these funds to be done. And we present budget change order for the capital project at one-twenty-three for your acceptance and approval.
Make the motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. I think, are you gonna do this next one or are we waiting on Thomas Duran, Human Resources?
We're waiting on Thomas.
He was here, I guess we should have gotten him up to, he was here all day.
Yeah.
He's on, he's on his way.
I asked if he wanted to be moved up. He was waiting. We'll see, he should be back. Moving on then to F one, discuss and consider authorization and approval of an execution of lease with Rico USA for one copier for County Judge Commissioners Court. This is just to exchange ours out because we don't have a color copier over there and all the staff, all the commissioners and everybody use this one, so.
Yes.
It's.
And this is budgeted and it's just a, it's just a replacement, right?
Change out and take the one we have and.
Okay. Motion for, motion to pass.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Item number two, discuss and consider approval of method of procurement IFB for modernization of technology infrastructure for cybersecurity equipment and authorize a purchasing agent to publish a notice.
Yes, we're asking for approval to go out for bid now after a very long process of evaluating what we had and where we need to be. And we found out that we're, we're very outdated and it's time to, time to go out for bid. Took us over a year to look at all of this, but it was quite a learning process. It is very hardware bound. You can see here that I've, I've listed this AES and FIPS. That's the Advanced Encryption Standard that is used on all hardware. And the FIPS is for the Federal Information Processing Standards, which is required for all of our CGS compliancy and any federal level compliances. So, and we, we have equipment now that, of course, could be reaching end of life. And if, when that happens, there's no longer update, so we would no longer stay in compliancy. So that's one thing.
This has already been approved through ARPA funds and stuff, the funding source for this.
The allocation was approved. It's just been a while because we've done that much research, have looked up.
Just ready to go out now and use this.
Plus, it was under a different county judge, so it was to kind of refresh it and give opportunity to ask any other question, especially for yourself. And, but it is, it, things have evolved quite a bit, so it was, it was worth the wait. And there's a lot of new players out there, a lot of changes. And we're just doing things different. We, we're adding a lot of applications in-house that will go on the new data center that we have in here. We also have more cloud-based applications and all of this, the, the design of all of this protects us a whole lot more internally. And also, it's a, it's a different way of reaching out over the internet to get to our cloud-based applications that is much more secure and it's not the old way of doing things. And so we don't have to worry about manipulations by hackers that send people where they don't belong to take advantage. Again, those are compliancy issues. So, and we, yes, we have a budget established and we're still gonna stay within that budget.
Have you all gotten started with it? Have you all done, was it just?
No, we, we're going out for bid now. We, we have the bid, we're done with the bid spec part, so we're gonna move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
But we have the, we have all the funds though, right? That's the bottom line.
And this is all ARPA funded and, and certainly touches on, on our budget woes that we wouldn't be doing that. So, and of course, working with Jeff and Lulu.
Yeah, I made the motion, you seconded it. Yes, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. We are waiting on Mr. Duran. He left because he thought we were going, so I think we will go in. Are you ready for your item ten, Commissioner Chesney?
You know what, I think I, I think I am, Judge.
Okay, let's go back to three-eight-ten.
Yeah, I think so. I was just waiting on something to get back to me and I did.
Discuss and consider allowing county staff to proceed with the process of renaming County Road Twenty-Two between County Road Forty-Three and County Road Fifty-One. And do you have your name?
Judge, I would, I would propose, propose that we post for the two weeks that we rename County Road Twenty-Two between County Road Forty-Three and Fifty-One, London Family Road. That's London Family Road would be the proposal on that. And then I have a second motion on the annexation part of that as well.
I'll second that. Motion to name the road London Family Road. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
And that would be, Judge, we would have to, Peyton should be listening, that would be, we would put that on, uh, to, to post, and so there would be a public hearing in, I think it's in two weeks or whenever the next meeting is. We've got to do it officially then, so that's just to allow it to proceed with the process. And then, um, also, um, to, um, make the motion to allow the annexation subject to the county road being renamed by the Commissioners Court as proposed today. So, uh, that would be the second motion, and that would be that part of the county road that, um, we had discussed at the last meeting.
Do you get that motion?
That, that was the motion.
Okay. All sec, Commissioner has all seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
And then Jenny, on that, I don't know what we have to do legally to get that to them. I'm gonna leave that to you two. I don't know what we have to do to, I don't, if you tell them, and that we have to sign, I don't, I don't know. I can't remember how we did the last time, but it's the same thing as we did on London Pirate Road, which was formerly County Road thirty-three.
We'll, uh, assist with all of that paperwork, and, um, I believe the public hearing is for the renaming, but not, you don't need that for the annexation.
Right. I just don't know what we need to do to get the city knowledge that we're doing it, but I do want to make sure it's contingent on, I want to not finalize the annexation with them until we get the road renamed. So if you could just keep that in mind on the timing when you're working on that, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you Judge, I'm done on that one.
You're welcome. I, I think, uh, we had a vote to take item number four, three A fourteen into executive session. I think, uh, we will move to executive, and we'll bring this last one. Oh, Tomas, you're here, I was waiting on you. I was like, I was gonna try, thank you, Commissioner Modis. Then we'll finish with Human Services. Item E one, discuss and consider authorizing and approving renewals for the services listed before, below, for the Nueces County employees self-funded group health program and ancillary services. I think, purchasing, and Tomas, you're, do you want to take this?
Yes ma'am. I can give you a real detail, but I was hoping maybe to give you an overview, and if you have questions to ask me, and that way I don't take a lot of your time. Part of this is fairly straightforward, so it should be rather simple to go through it. Essentially, you will have a, you have a renewal for all the services that we have, uh, bitted out and analyzed and recommended, uh, a couple of years ago. This is a renewal, it's not automatic, it's brought back to you. There are no rate increases other than those that were approved and awarded at that time through a bid process. And the services, uh, the only thing that has changed is there's a requirement that was, uh, required, imposed, uh, on the, what's called, uh, an act that where employees have the ability to look at comparable cost of medical services. And you all approved that some time ago. Now we're just bringing forward that item that has to, we have to amend the actual benefit booklet to, to include it in it. The ancillary services on the, on the, from the carriers have remained essentially the same, well, they have remained the same cost as it regards the portions paid for by the county. There has been some minor modifications on rerating on, uh, both the, uh, life and disability programs on employees that have selected over twenty thousand dollars in life insurance. Otherwise, the rates and the benefits are, remain the same as it was awarded prior, okay?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
I, I just wanted to ask, so with everything staying the same, it always seems there's like doctors or they kind of drop out, so.
That's a separate, uh, you have that on the network, but, uh, if you want me to get into that piece of it, I would love to because it is important. And, uh, it's, uh, this, uh, really, the only issue of substance, and we sent a substantial email out that was required to notify employees and uncovered individual dependents as it regards the change resulting from, uh, on the National Aetna Network. Christus, or pieces of, of Christus, uh, were no longer where, they were negotiating a renewal contract, and the negotiations fell apart. Aetna felt that the increase was pretty substantial, and more than they expected, that they wanted increases on. They shared that information with me. I've had discussions, uh, directly with both Christus, uh, the people in charge of that portion of the managed care. And, um, frankly, uh, what happened in my opinion is that Aetna was protecting our interests, your interests, in the regards that the medical requests for increases were substantially higher, in some cases, more than fifty, fifty percent increase than what the charges are. And, uh, they have both asked for me to intercede. I really stayed out of it because I didn't want to put a book aside on it, but, uh, uh, I think the, uh, I'm glad that Aetna retained their position.
And that is the next item, that's number two on here, is this part of this?
Well, that's, that's the reinsurance. That is this reinsurance. What we're discussing with, what, what Commissioner Modis has, has raised is the, uh, the networks, uh-
Comparing apples to apples, while you say it's stayed the same, we still have doctors in there.
Yeah, you have, you, you don't have any lots of services, available services. You just have a group of number of different portions of the services that have been affected because of those negotiations, and effectively, they terminated their contracts, uh, July one, and so that caused us having to force that matter forward and to notification to employees. But there's still sufficient members to, to provide the services. It is, does not include everything that has, uh, relationships with it, with that network.
And, and, and that was my, I mean, part of what my question was, I mean, that happens all the time, doesn't it?
It happens every day. Look, every time a contract comes up between a provider and, and, and an insurance company, it's constant. I mean, it's, uh, I've, I've, I've done it, uh, I used to have a network of my own years ago, uh, and, and it's a constant process. It's just, uh, I'm, I'm smiling, you're smiling, because obviously you, you know about it, uh, but it's, it's, it's pretty routine. In this case, uh, we had hoped that they could arrive at a resolution. I refuse to intercede because I clearly believe that I should not, uh, and, uh, I would have discussed it with you ahead of time, but I didn't. It's so, uh, the increase is so, uh, out of the ordinary that I, I think if I said it to you, and I, I would not be able to do it openly. It'd have to be in some form of confidential way, but, uh, I mean, it's just not reasonable in my opinion.
And that's the, the main question I usually get if anyone asks about healthcare is, you know, why does my doctor drop out? Or I had a doctor and now y'all got rid of him.
Typically related to money.
We really didn't, it's just because it happens regularly, and that, and that was why I wanted you to be able to address that.
Yeah, in this case, it, it involved more particulars because of who they are, and they're local, and, uh, well, not anymore, they're not really local, but they have a, a very large influential presence here in town, yeah.
Thank you.
Now, that was on the first items.
The first items, is that the one where you're suggesting we take option three?
Yes ma'am, I think you should, you need to take the, uh, let me go back to the item itself. And get, I'll get my glasses, they're old. My eyes are old. The, uh, on the items one and two, one is what I'm referring to at this time.
Do we have to vote on each one of these items individually Jenny? Probably.
But I mean-
Please.
Yes.
Yes.
Some of those are combined, if I might say, but I'm-
Oh, I'm going to item two, so we have to vote on this first. Sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Um, but do, we have to vote each one of these seven items to have a motion? To continue, and you're saying it stayed the same, no increase or anything, so minimal?
There's some, yeah. There's some changes to employees on their choice that they pay a hundred percent off. They're very minor and significant, it really applies to, uh, the category on over twenty thousand, I believe, on life insurance and maximum disability. But again, there, I think there's forty-five cents, you have it, it's in the attachments, uh, but it's forty-five cents, uh, and, but there's literally no effect to the county itself at all in terms of what, in terms of what you pay, okay? And during open enrollment, that will be shown to the employees, and they'll have to make a selection as to what they want to do.
You're on my insurance committee, you okay with all this?
Yeah, no.
Okay. I make the motion to pass, item number one.
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, item number two, third-party administration. Make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a second, motion and a second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item number three, disease management pre-certification utilization program and wellness program. I make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Item number four, Cobra HIPAA Administration. I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number five, cafeteria plans, section one, two, five, plan administrator. Make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number six, I couldn't I have done all these in one? Item number six, pharmacy benefit management program. I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number seven, ancillary benefits including group term life insurance. I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Now, item number two, discuss and consider authorizing and approving renewal with Aetna Life Insurance Company under Boone Chapman Benefits Administrator for RFP number thirty-one oh nine dash nineteen. Um, this is the specific reinsurance stop-loss as part of our healthcare plan and medical and pharmacy benefits.
I, uh, on this one, I-
This is the one you did the option.
This is, uh, I really do want to focus a little bit on it. We, we basically, uh, sometimes have very large claims, and we have, uh, I had expected that we would have, uh, substantial rate increase, given the, uh, exposed liability you have from large claims. But, uh, we got lucky because things improved in the last two weeks when we started really trying to finish up and wrap this up. And, uh, what you have is, uh, three options for renewal with Aetna. And they're all essentially the same, except for the, the real variable is on the specific deductible, and you should have that chart in front of you. You have, uh, it should look like this here.
It has the three options across the top, yes.
Okay, you have the three options. The, the real variable, uh, is the spec, you currently have about four hundred thousand dollars, and you have an option for twen, four twenty-five, an option for four hundred fifty thousand and four seventy-five. What that means is that, uh, those options, the critical aspect of it is twofold. One is that you're gonna pay more if you have a claim that reaches that spec, that four seventy-five, four twenty-five, four fifty. You'll pay more on the claim, and the lower the spec, uh, the lower you pay on the claims, you pay just up to that amount, and the excess goes to spec and they'll pay it up to a million dollars.
For the reinsurance, yes.
That's right, on the reinsurance. In our case, we've been able to negotiate it down to, uh, to where your spec and the actual payout, when you compare it to the premium, you're really, in my opinion, you'd be better off going to the high spec, the four seventy-five, and pay the lower premium, which saves you a hundred thousand dollars, give or take a few pennies. And, and the concept is, and I've discussed this with, uh, with the Auditor's Office, uh, with Mr. Ashley. Essentially, uh, when you pay a premium, the money is gone. You, you don't get it back. So if the two are pretty much the same, and typically you don't have three claims that, that exceed four hundred thousand dollars. So if, if you take, for example, option one, you're gonna be paying a hundred thousand dollars more in premium. If you take option three, the odds are that you're not gonna do it, and you're gonna save a hundred thousand dollars. It is simply that, it's, that's silly, okay, that's silly. It's, it's not si, not complicated, so my-
Given the year, would that apply?
Yes ma'am, well, in the year beginning October one.
The year, previous year, yeah.
Beginning October one, okay?
Yes.
October one is last year?
Of this year, no, come, it's coming up. This is for next year.
Oh, I know it's for next year, but I'm saying, you're saying we would save a hundred thousand dollars. Given this previous year, at the end of this year, would you be telling us the same thing?
Yeah, if, uh, yeah, I think so, but, but the odds, look, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a toss of a coin.
I know.
But, but the reality is, is that everything that I've recommended to you, and, and I've been recommended to do it this way for I don't know how long, and it has always worked for you. Because typically, we just don't get to that point. You do have large claims, but on the aggregate, you don't have large claims, on the aggregate meaning you have multiple large claims, but they don't really get to a million. You know, it's, it's just, that's just not the way it is. They, it did happen one year, and Aetna wrote you a check, a pretty good size check for that.
So it is your suggestion that we choose option number three, which would save us immediately a hundred thousand in premiums?
A hundred thousand, yes ma'am. Your, your cost would actually go down.
Is that what you think, Dill? Are you agree with all this?
Uh, so yes, uh, we, we're speaking with Tomas, going with the values, as we, as we say, uh, the, the, the way the premium works, a hundred thousand dollars would be a savings, because as you know, uh, it, it all depends, depends on the number of, uh, large claims. If we have a large claims, as he said, it could be more pricey, but, but in our history is that that's never been an issue that, that, uh, we, we did the rest of it, so. I still say that, I still agree with what Tomas, Tomas is saying.
It's, it's really a dice, okay? You're rolling a dice, and you don't really know the answer, because-
You won't know till next year, yes.
That's right, yes ma'am.
So, um, I will make the motion to pass with option number three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming back, yes.
I apologize for the delay, okay?
No, you were here, we know, we saw you.
Yeah, you've been in here, we know you were sitting here, I asked you earlier, so I wasn't gonna skip you.
Thank you.
Um, going, um, I guess we've already done your ten, so we can go into executive session, then we will have to come out because there are a couple of other regular agenda items that I want to do for, after executive when we find out this amount. So, um, it is, what time? Twelve thirty-two, and we are going into executive session. Public notice is given, Commissioners Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, chapter five, five, one of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there has been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda item in executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event the Commissioners Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer in accordance with the authority of the Government Code, Vernon's Code, section five, five, one dot zero seven one, five, five, one dot zero seven two, five, five, one dot zero seven three, five, five, one dot zero seven four, five, five, one dot zero seven four five, 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 one dot zero seven six, five, five, one dot zero eight six, five, five, one dot zero eight seven. The Commissioners Court will hold an executive session to consult with the attorneys, including matters relating to litigation deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic- county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic development negotiations and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioner's Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on the items discussed in the executive session. We are going to pull, I had it right here or now? I lost it. Sorry. Item three-A fourteen to the ARPA balances and for precinct and countywide projects. Discuss and consider eligibility requirements for sub-awards to sub-recipients, title U.S. Code of Federal Regulations, Part two hundred. Discuss and consider taking action regarding allegation plans, processes of the American Rescue Plan Act funds to the following projects. Item number one is City of Driscoll, and there is a typo in that. It is six hundred and thirty-two thousand that was allocated to them. Sina Core Foundation, one million dollar was allocated to them. And item number three, Oasis County Water Control and Improvement District, number three, one million has been allocated to them. And the Government Code five-five-one dot zero seven-two-five is the code we are taking them into court for, so. I believe that says it all. Thank you very much. We'll be back. And we are coming back to open session from executive. Going back to item number fourteen in open session, receive update on ARPA balances for precinct and countywide projects. Discuss and consider eligibility requirements for sub-awards to sub-recipients under Title II, U.S. Code of Federal Regulations, Part two hundred. Discuss and consider taking action regarding the allocation of plans, processes of the American Rescue Plan Act funds to the following projects. The first one being the City of Driscoll. I think we have a motion on that one since we discussed it back-
Yes, sir. This is my, this is my, I want, I'm, what I'm proposing is, I had allocated six hundred and thirty-two thousand for City of Driscoll for drainage. I want to cancel that.
So we have a motion to unallocate the six hundred and thirty-two thousand plus the one thirty-four, right?
Yeah.
Plus one, there was two separate things. There's two-
And it says a million on the, on the-
Yeah.
Agenda page, so that's-
That's a misprint.
Right, okay. So it's, go ahead, Judge. So sec, I would second your motion to rescind the initial six hundred and thirty-four thousand.
And, and also, also I'm going to rescind the one thirty, I think it's one thirty-two?
One thirty-four.
One-
From his personal-
Yes, from, from my-
Do you want to make it one motion or two motions, Commissioner?
Making two motions. There's two separate ones.
Get it, who is the first one first?
Okay, so then we just need to-
Two different votes, okay? The first vote, we are, he has made a motion to-
Six hundred, what's the exact amount?
Unallocate the six hundred and thirty-two, I think.
Wait, hold on, let's tell you.
Where's Lulu?
Six hundred and thirty-two, it was supposed to be for drainage.
Right.
Six thirty-two is the original, is this amount here?
That's what I had here. So we have a motion and a second to unallocate to the City of Driscoll the six hundred and thirty-two thousand.
I have a discussion.
Yes, please.
You know, I don't mind supporting this, but I still think we need to consider Driscoll from the beginning and try to see who can find back their a hundred fifty thousand dollars that was taken away from, from the previous judge, made some promises that weren't kept in behalf of Oasis County. So that's my statement.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. And then you have to make the motion on your allocated funds, Commissioner.
On the, oh, yes, and I want to put back the-
Wait, wait. Do you have to unallocate your personal one thirty-four first?
Oh, I thought already. I'm sorry, Judge.
They said we had to do two separate ones.
Okay. I'm, I'm allocate the one thirty-two, hundred and thirty-two thousand from my personal ARPA funds? Make the motion.
Hundred and thirty-four.
One thirty. One thirty-four.
Is the amount I'm showing, so we-
I apologize, one thirty-four.
That's okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Hernandez to unallocate the hundred and thirty-four thousand to the City of Driscoll, and I will second that motion.
It's actually from, to the City of Driscoll Drainage Improvement District.
Drainage Improvement?
Project.
Project. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Moving on to your next motion, Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes, I propose that I want to do six, five hundred thousand for the City of Driscoll for the, for the, oh my goodness.
Senior Center.
Senior Center.
For the senior center, community center. I apologize. I want to allocate five hundred thousand to that, Judge.
And that's one thirty-four from you and the rest from the county, is that right, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Second that motion.
We have a motion.
Total allocation of five hundred, one thirty-four from Commissioner Hernandez, the rest from the countywide ARPA fund.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. The next item up on the list is Sina Core Foundation. And I regrettably am going to make the motion to unallocate the million dollars allocated to them as well. They, after careful review and much consideration from our team that has been out there and talked to them and everything, the, the county feels like this is in a high risk and as unpleasant as it is, I do believe it is the right decision for the county, but I am making the motion to unallocate the one million to Sina Core.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Item number three, Oasis County Water Control and Improvement District, number three. And unfortunately, I'm going to make the same motion on this one. We like to help our neighbors. We like to work together with community partners and everything, but we wouldn't be doing our due diligence if we didn't move forward and listen to the advice of council giving us on high risk and what we need to do for the county going forward with the budget problems that we have. That's my decision behind making this motion as well.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Yes, sir.
I, I think that since I initially make the allocations in this year, I think that they probably be in a position to be, work this out, if maybe, if, if not, that's, that's fine. If it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. But so that's my statement.
Any other discussion?
Judge, I'd like to see us try to give an opportunity at least to break this project down to a more manageable amount.
I can't hear you, John. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, to break this amount down to a more manageable amount as far as total project scope. I believe it was totaled for four million dollars. I know there's certain requirements, I guess, to their dues, the best way to describe it, Jeff, right? Certain provisions in what strikes, strikes out a, a project.
Right, Commissioner. The total project was four point three. The, the amount they were asking for, for this, this portion of it was one million.
And it, and so the full amount has to be covered in, in order for it to be, to meet the qualifications, is that right?
To be operational.
To be operational within the year twenty twenty-six.
Within December of twenty twenty-six, correct.
Judge, are you done, John?
Yeah.
Judge, real quick, just to comment on this too, and I think it's important to note that not only were these high-risk projects, but part of my reasoning for this is not only that, but because of the fact that we, in our next couple of agenda items, have millions of dollars of needs that we have to take care of for the, the, the things that we have to take care of and we are constitutionally and statutorily obligated to take care of. So that's part of this, as far, as far as I'm looking at it as too, because no one wants to, to do this but the high-risk projects of the nature. And I think really, we're going to have to look at all the projects going forward that we've given, that are outside of our venue because of the fact that we've got a lot of needs that are going to be identified here in about five minutes. They're going to be pretty staggering. We're going to need this money for ourselves as well, too. So I think that's, that's a big part of this decision, for me supporting this as well. Just want to point that out.
And the most that can be allocated is one million, or that was just what was suggested?
That's what had been suggested. That's the amount they were asking for.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye. No.
The motion passes three to two. Moving on to item fifteen, discuss and consider selection of Govan Development LLC for development of plans and specification to replace wastewater pipes in the Oasis County Courthouse and Jail facilities. Discuss and consider allocation of ARPA funds for replacement of wastewater pipes in the Courthouse and Jail Facilities project and related matters. We, we brought this up at a, at another meeting. We have once done a preliminary list and cost of what it would be. I believe it is in your packet. I'm not seeing it right here in front of me. Sorry.
About four million, six hundred thousand.
That's what it is, four million, six hundred thousand.
The shortage is one million, four hundred and two thousand.
Wait, what is?
Estimated probable cost, four million, six hundred thousand.
Four million, six thirty-two, five oh eight, thirty-nine cents. Yes, sir. And the shortage is one million, four oh two, six fifty-seven.
That we have funds available for this, or why are you saying the shortage? I thought we needed the whole four million.
But that, what's budgeted for ARPA is only three point two, two-nine right now.
For the-
Some has a review.
Oh, when we brought this up before, so we need an additional one point four, yes, okay.
For the wastewater pipes in Oasis County Courthouse? That's the one? So, okay, I'm confused here for a second though.
Me too. I was totally confused.
Oh, I see. Okay, but we're doing the Govan part first and then it's consider allocation second, right?
Yes.
Okay, so-
It's two votes.
So my, my question was, oh, sorry. Go ahead. I was going to ask a question on the Govan part first, but I don't mean to jump ahead. I mean, that was-
You're good.
Sorry. So are, since this is an ARPA potential project, are we allowed to do this?
Govan is pre-approved and we had already selected him.
Yes, it meets all the criterias under-
He's on the list.
Yes.
It meets all the criteria, criterias under expenditure category for U.S. Department of Treasury.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Then I would make a motion to, to select Govan Development for development of plans and specs to replace wastewater pipes, subject to us coming up with the remaining funds that are needed.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Same sign.
You know, this even, is this probably even better because I, I don't remember allocating this already, but if we had already allocated those funds, they're already there, you know, they're already there. So we, it says here the shortage will only be one million, four oh two, six five seven. So if that's a shortage, I mean, we shouldn't have no problem at all with the shortage.
Is that already on the list, Lulu, for the three point two for the courthouse?
So prior to the adjustments of any remaining balances that we have right now that are complete, we had countywide remaining balance of three million, two hundred and twenty-nine, five hundred and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. And reallocating any projects that have already been completed or about soon to be completed, that includes a two million, seventy-four thousand, ninety-seven dollars and thirty-two cents, which brings a total of-
I don't think that's what I was asking.
Oh, we're going to have enough money to cover.
Well, wait, okay.
To cover this, but did we already allocate three point two?
Not yet. No.
I was going to say, we haven't allocated anything for this, have we?
No, we have not.
Yeah. I do, I wasn't aware. I was shocked when I saw the bottom of this page.
So we have not allocated anything for this project?
Not for this project.
Four million. It's not on our list. When was that?
Because the three point two is the amount that, that was shown available?
You got to get your mic. I can't hear you.
The three point two was the amount that was available, excess that y'all were going to put towards.
But we haven't done it yet.
We haven't done any, so we need the whole four million total.
So, all right, so this, this blue sheet, Lulu, that I'm looking at, before we just did what we did, we had five point three million.
Prior? No, this is-
Remaining, I'm looking at your sheet.
Correct. On the agenda, which was uploaded, we have currently three point two.
Plus the two million that you just said, so that's five point three.
That is correct.
Okay, so the blue sheet-
We're going to use four point six three two for this, so we will have less than one left.
No, no.
But we need to allocate the project.
Let me just, hold on. So we had five point three coming into today and we just unallocated two million, million dollars. So now this number goes to seven point three, correct? So now, as we sit here today in real time, we have seven point three million, seven point three oh three, six oh five, seven one. And we need how much for this project?
Four million, six thirty-two, one sixty-five, sixty-two.
Four million, six thirty-two, what?
One sixty-five, sixty-two.
Okay, so are we wanting then, Judge, to allocate the remaining amounts to this and the roof? This, the roof? What's, what do we, where are we headed? But, I mean, because don't we have the roof that we need to worry about too?
Yes, but we don't have the funds for it.
Okay, so, so at this point, you want to just allocate the four point six million towards plumbing?
Because that's doable, because we don't have the money to do the roof, yes. If we come up with more money, I think that's where we need to focus. If we come back, that will be our next focus, but right now, this is all we have the money for.
Available.
Okay, so seven point three oh three, six oh five, point seventy, minus four six three two, one six five, point six two, equals. That will leave us two point six milli, two six seven one, this could be a little off, four four oh, point oh eight. And the reason that last vote was so crucial to this county is we're still six or, six or seven million dollars short for probably what's going to cost the roof, so at least-
The next item as well, if that goes-
No, no, I get it. So, and then we got the other items coming up too. So again, that, 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 that is very much emphasis of, of what we, why we had to painfully do that last vote that was not, nobody wanted to do, but we kind of had to just do it. And I get why others didn't want to. I'm just, just saying. So we're still going to be super short because that's going to leave us about two point six million and we've still got about a million dollars worth of employees and about six or eight million dollars where the roof works, a million dollars worth of employees that are on ARPA that we're going to have to make a decision on at some point, today, I guess. Okay, that, that would be, I guess, if that's where you want to go with it, Judge, I'd make the motion to allocate four point six three two, one six five, six two of ARPA, remaining countywide ARPA funds towards the wastewater pipes in Oasis County Courthouse and Jail facilities.
Plumbing and plumbing.
We already had a, we have your motion and Commissioner Gonzalez, you seconded, right?
Right.
And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item number sixteen, discuss and consider the allocation of ARPA funds towards current ARPA public sector positions for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and other related matters. And-
Judge, on this one, my apologies.
On this one here, I, for instance, I would like to fucking table this for next meeting, August the ninth. See, there's a possibility of what I have, that maybe we can extend it one year, not two years. So, you know, but I'm just-
Well, we tabled it from the last meeting, so.
We did?
Yeah, I mean, it was on the last time we tabled it from the last meeting to here because we wanted to do that. I mean.
I know, I remember that.
But-
I must have not been here.
Well, before, before you make it, let me, here's what I would like to do with one of the, the, the deputy constable that handles precinct. I know, I know we're going to have a very hard time making, putting any of these folks-
In the vacants.
Putting any of these folks into-
General fund.
General fund, so, you know, with where we are this year. So I, I would like to make a motion to allocate the funds necessary from, from my ARPA funds, precinct funds, to cover the precinct for constable for one more year because I, I'm, I'm going to have a hard time supporting a lot of this. Because I'm gonna have a hard time supporting a lot of this going into the general fund or any of it going into the general fund or being funded by ARPA because I think we're gonna be out of ARPA money. But I would like to at least make a motion to, I think it's Deputy Constable Precinct four, or sorry, Deputy Constable Clayburg property, that would come out of my precinct for ARPA funds.
You're just doing for the one year, though?
For one year.
For one more year.
Yeah, until we figure out where we are.
Okay.
Further discussion, I just, and that's what I wanted to do, because I don't, you've got vacancies here, we got, so come, I wanna probably say, you know what? If I had the money to do the rest of them, or one, two, or three, I wanna come back and do that, right? I mean.
Or some that you wanna do or whatever. Okay, well, I mean, do you, okay, so if I, I'd like to do this one out of mind today.
You wanna do this motion? You're making the motion to do, yes, okay.
Yeah, for the Clayburg Constable property, that's the one that I need to do out of my ARPA funds for one year.
Okay. We have a motion to keep the Deputy Constable for Clayburg County to come out of Commissioner Chesney's Precinct Four funds for one more year. Dale, do you have something to say about it?
Well, I need to work with the people of the ARPA side because the personals, the funds we currently are using for this public sector funds coming out of a certain section of the ARPA funds. I don't know if it can be allowed to be moved to his particular funds. So I just wanna make sure they look into that before you make a full vote on that.
Okay. Commissioner Modas did it for twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, and it came out of his funds for Emmy positions.
I just wanna make sure the rules, who the rules for this is public sector, that's where this was funded from.
Which is public sector.
Now we're trying to use other funds, so it still be funding out of the public sector.
Right, which is going to the public sector.
I think so.
So you have to stretch the funds, money to the public sector.
Yeah, I mean, we've done it before, so, I mean, I'm comfortable moving forward. If you find something later, that's fine, but I wanted to, we can always bring it back, but I, we have done it before, so I'm good with that. And then, okay, well, that's a motion, and I got a couple other questions, too, but I'll.
I got a question, too.
And he seconded that motion, Judge, so whenever you're running.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I thought I'd already started that, but I forgot, sorry. To keep him on Commissioner Chesney's Precinct Four ARPA allegations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Just for the next fiscal year.
Just for one year.
Correct.
Yes. And let it be known, I'm only voting for this because I don't believe in paying any of our employees out of this. I think it's gotten us into the trouble that it's gotten us into. I wouldn't be voting for this if it wasn't your designated funds that you have every right to use, so.
And I wouldn't need it, so.
Yes, so, yeah.
No, I'm with you. I wouldn't, I feel the same way, Judge.
Okay.
That's why I did it out of mind.
I, we've had a lot of problems with that, and I, I think.
On this one, I got a question on the, says Deputy Constable Clayburg Property, Precinct One?
I think that's a typo.
That's a typo.
Probably.
Yeah. Clayburg Properties.
Is, that's the one Brent just did. Right?
It wasn't allocated for?
No, it's out of Bobby. I mean, now it's Chris.
But he didn't, he didn't patrol Clayburg. At one sliver of Clayburg that.
No, no, that, three thousand acres that we have?
Yeah.
They, he does more than that area, but that's what we added.
Okay, gotcha.
But I think that's a typo, yes.
Okay.
And there are.
Right, he has the whole beach area. They do a lot.
Yeah.
There are a couple of open positions on that list. I know there's one in the emergency operations. There's, don't you have one out, Jenny, that you don't have one open? Do you have one open or something?
Not open, they're staffed, but one out on leave.
Oh, okay.
And so, Judge, are you gonna do something with those?
No, I'm not asking to push forward with mine even.
So then we would.
I think if we can't fund it with general fund, we don't need to fund employees.
Then you, then you're gonna.
Personal opinion.
Then you wanna make a motion to eliminate that position? Because that's what needs to happen.
Yeah.
Emergency planner or what?
Yeah, it's your, I mean, it's your department, so I'm not gonna get in your, you know what I mean?
Well, I was gonna make the motion with whatever was left. I don't think we ought to pay any of them. I think they have to end sometime. We're, we're just putting, prolonging the agony for anybody. I think it's not a pleasant thing. I don't take any joy or pleasure in this whatsoever, please, and in our employees as well. But if we can't afford to pay out of our general revenue funds, pay salaries out of that, I think we have to get away from this practice because the money's running out.
Go ahead. Okay.
So.
Could I just address to the court for just one moment on the ARPA-funded attorney? The one that assists the court in making ARPA funding decisions?
The one that works with Lulu and Jeff is gonna be leaving, so that, that's very different, I think, when you're or.
But she tells to fill it, is what she's saying, right?
Yes, that's the one that we are hoping because we do not have an attorney who is sitting ready to.
Which one is that one?
Full-time.
Two or three, or one?
Which, which number is that on there, do you know?
Attorney three? Yeah, and I thought, I thought we'd already done that because.
Because she's through twenty twenty-six. I thought they were both through twenty twenty-six.
Right, I thought we had funded, so I think that was an oversight. I thought we'd funded both of them through twenty-six because they are ARPA direct-related expenses.
Yes.
So I would definitely make the motion to fund the attorney three position.
Second that motion, yes.
Through twenty-six. This one would be through twenty-six to coincide with Lulu's funding as well. So the motion would be to fund the ARPA attorney three position through ARPA funds through twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Both of them, right?
Just one.
She, Lulu's already done, there's just one attorney.
Yeah, Lulu's done.
Yes, Lulu's through twenty twenty-six. So, and I seconded the motion. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. There being none, the motion passes. Then, did you, are you wanting to bring the rest of them back up? Commissioner Gonzalez, what are you wanting to do with those? Or I'll hold off on my other motion if you wanna, what?
Yeah, I'd like to bring them back to my list that I'm, I'm gonna.
But how many do you think you're gonna try to fund? I mean, are there ones that you know you're not gonna fund?
You're not gonna refund yours.
Let's get it done.
No, probably gonna fund, it's gonna be the Public Information Officer.
You're gonna fund that?
It's gonna be the vacant position you got for disaster recovery, emergency preparedness planner. Then adjust that, she wasn't gonna do that. The Deputy Constable Precinct Four, should be four, I guess, from Clayburg Property.
One of those isn't filled, one of those constables is not filled.
The risk assessment officer.
Constable Precinct Five vacant. And Deputy Michael Examiner was only there for three months or something.
It was only allocated for up to September thirty.
Yes. And then the technicians and stuff were only allocated for one year through Commissioner Modas, so. I'm wanting y'all to make your motions first before I make a motion to not approve any of them.
Let me give you the ones I'm gonna keep, okay?
Okay.
The shortest, shorter. Attorney two, civil.
Is that yours, Jenny? Attorney two, civil?
What is the motion on that one to keep?
He's trying to list the ones that he's thinking about funding himself.
Trying to, okay. Yes, that is the.
He's just, no, he's just talking.
That is the CPS attorney helping to deal with the backlog of COVID cases.
Legal Secretary one, Deputy Constable four. And. The autopsy technician, that's the ones I'm gonna, I'm gonna fund, it'll be one, two, three, four.
One, two, three, and four, you wanna fund out of your commissioner?
Right. So do you wanna, you wanna do that today or do you wanna?
Take the motion or?
I can do it today, but it don't make any difference, I mean.
Okay, so make your motion.
Attorney, attorney, attorney two, civil, legal secretary, deputy constable precinct four, and autopsy technician.
So is that your motion? That's, and that's out of your, that's.
Allocated from my, my ARPA fund for one year.
I'd second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second to fund the positions, I think, on the list, one, two, three, and four, through Commissioner Gonzalez's ARPA allocated for funds.
Is that just the autopsy tech coming from your funds, Commissioner? And the others are just gonna continue with the.
The others.
No, we haven't acted on those yet. We have not acted on those yet.
No.
The ones that he just mentioned.
Just those four.
And the rest are not.
The rest we haven't voted on yet.
Yes, that's coming.
He just agreed to fund four. I just agreed to fund one. There's ten spots left to talk about.
No, I'm asking is, because three of them are already funded, right, in ARPA? But the one, the autopsy tech was funded from Commissioner Modas, so you're only.
But it ends this year. He's asking, he's funding it for next year. He's funding one additional year.
One year.
Correct.
That's it.
The rest were already funded through next year?
No.
They're already on.
Not for next year, no?
Didn't y'all just vote to continue those?
No, not those, sorry. Okay. Teresa, you were napping. No. We're only voting.
So we, so today, what we voted on, Judge, I believe, is to fund the attorney three, two, legal secretary one, deputy constable four, Clayburg Constable, and autopsy tech. Is that right? That, because you, is that correct?
Yeah, because three is already, it's already on there. But attorney two, legal secretary.
So we have a motion and a second to fund the attorney lumber three, the legal assistant.
No, 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 we already did three, Judge. I was just listing the whole list, sorry.
Oh, okay, okay.
My bad. I'm sorry, I was just trying to remember, make sure I had them all right. So.
Attorney two.
Attorney two.
Legal secretary.
Legal secretary.
Deputy Constable four.
And the autopsy technician. Yes.
And I seconded that.
Okay, all those in favor, do you have that?
Yes, to fund all.
All four for one year from his allocation.
Yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yes.
Four, out of your ARPA funds.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, do you have a, you want discussion? Okay, sorry.
So I'm looking at the chart and I don't, maybe I'm looking at the wrong chart. And I know I saw another chart, so I'm looking at the one that's a part of the attachment online, but I think we got sent another one. At some point, some of these salaries drop, right? Is that what we're talking about here? So the Deputy Medical Examiner, that was not part of the list, right?
Correct, John, that's one that.
Yes, that's only, it was only for three months, actually. That was not for even annually.
So, so that, so that means that if we don't fund the remainder, that those positions are gone because they have to go into the general fund.
So what do we have left then? PIO?
Well, let's finish this motion with Jags first, that he's willing to fund.
I need to know, so, I mean, I may make a separate motion.
Oh, okay.
Or make an amendment to the motion.
We have the.
So what's left that has not been covered?
PIO, we have the disaster recovery specialist, but it's vacant, emergency preparedness.
Deputy Constable Clayburg.
No, that's mine.
No, that's his, the Constable Precinct Eight.
No, that's, that goes away, that's a one-time deal.
That's a one-time deal, okay? And the medical examiner investigator, medical examiner investigator is all. Those five, one, two, three, four, five.
Emmy.
I need to make a copy.
Investigators, two of them.
Yes.
And the Deputy Medical Examiner?
Right.
Was that funded, no?
No.
No, that was only for three months, yes. That's not.
So, do I make it separate or can I ask Commissioner?
If you're gonna use your funds, you probably need to make a separate motion.
Okay, then I'll.
Let's make it clear, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for Commissioner Gonzalez, his funding for the four that you have listed, Kara.
My understanding, there's a typo on the list, and so it's actually not Deputy Constable four, it's Deputy Constable one.
Is that correct?
It's not one, though.
Because Commissioner Chesney is funding.
Four.
Four, and it was a typo for Clayburg. And it's listed as one, but it's actually four.
Right, that's why I said the, the Clayburg Property Constable, that's what I.
And then the one above it, the Deputy Constable should be one instead of four. Okay, so the one you're covering would be Deputy Constable one. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Do what now?
Commissioner Chesney is already.
But there's. No, no, there's two constables in there, though.
You're right, one is for one and one is for four. They should be switched.
Right, so he's doing one and I'm doing four.
So he's doing one, however, he said four in his motion.
Oh, oh, I see, I see.
She's just correcting the motion.
Right, right, I'm doing four, he's doing one.
Yes, perfect. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, now Commissioner Modas, yes.
Okay, so, once again, kind of going back to the chart, so for twenty-three, twenty-four, the Deputy Medical Examiner is not funded.
It is part of the general fund, it moved into the general fund, yes, yes, uh-huh.
So I.
So the only ones that are open are those five that I listed, yes.
That's a, but, but, yeah, but it's.
Can I include that here?
We'll discuss that.
It would be appreciated, because we don't have it. Let me do that, let me do that, okay, motion to.
It's a total salary of three hundred and thirty-five thousand plus benefits, so it's like four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, if I can help you here, I'll do it, I mean, yeah, okay, make a motion.
I'll second his motion before he changes his mind. He's gonna fund the Medical Examiner.
Deputy Medical Examiner for FY twenty-three, twenty-four. Fully funded through the, my allocation of ARPA funding, that's my motion.
Fully funded for one year.
For one year, for FY twenty-three, twenty-four, yes, ma'am.
And you have a, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, and then the rest, we don't even need a motion, because they just end at the, if there's no continuance, they end at the end of the year.
Can we bring this?
So, for his, to recap, Attorney Three.
He's fully funded for, until twenty twenty-six, like you.
Okay.
Yes, his position.
Although we're losing, okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Modas, I interrupted you?
No, 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 it's fine.
And we can always bring this back if you want to address it or something, but I think for now.
Well, I think, Judge, we need to make a motion to not fund the rest of these, and
They don't have funding, it ends, I mean, we don't have to do a motion for it, they end if we don't fund it.
I was just trying to.
To go ahead and make a motion to not fund the rest of the positions, if, yeah, if there's openings in our vacancies, and people want to apply somewhere, then that, we welcome that, we're not, but I think that, I make the motion to not fund the rest of the vacancies, the rest of the list that hasn't been funded for next year.
And Judge, I'm looking at the, I mean, I'd like to get it resolved, because I know that helps us look forward to the budget, so the Medical Examiner, or Medical Examiner Investigators, the two positions that I funded last year, or this current fiscal year, I'm sorry, that's going to the general fund, or that's not gonna be covered?
Right now, that's not covered, because right now, he's got several part-time positions in the general fund.
Okay, so, but going back to the chart that we have, I mean, it shows that there's a dollar amount for twenty-three, twenty-four, it's seventy, I'm sorry, fifty-seven, five, six, nine for each position, and it says SL-FRF Grant Fund, but.
What is that?
It's an estimate.
Okay.
It's just what it would cost.
If we wanted to continue on, that that would be the current rate.
Unless there's a date underneath it with approved, then there, that's just the cost that it would cost to continue.
Correct.
Okay, so I talked a lot earlier about the Medical Examiner Office, then my motion also, a new motion, the stands, autopsy, to include the autopsy tech, Medical Examiner Investigator.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
No, he, he did the autopsy tech correctly.
Okay, then it's the investigator, okay, there we go.
Two investigators.
Same, same motion.
Same motion, fully funded for FY twenty-three, twenty-four, yes, sorry, thank you.
So, we have a motion to fund that through Commissioner Modas's ARPA allocations for one more additional year, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, the motion passes, and then, I guess, now you want me to make a motion to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lulu.
What about the MOU, Constable for School Resource, do you want to continue that? The position is vacant currently.
It's vacant, so, how long has it been vacant?
It's been vacant about a month, is that correct, Dale?
Yeah, but that was supposed to be a one-time deal, that was supposed to be a one-time, that was a one-year deal to start with. What's that?
The MOU was for two, but if it's vacant, then it would be moot point.
Anybody have anything else? Do y'all think we need to do a motion to clarify?
Do you want to do the PIO? No, you, you have a, so, you said for the rest?
We do the PIO.
Nope.
We didn't do the PIO.
So it's not funded. I guess I just want to make sure the ones that are not gonna be funded, that y'all have it kind of allocated between, it's, it would be which ones, the PIO?
The PIO, the Disaster Recovery Specialist, Emergency Preparedness Planner, I am getting rid of everybody in my emergency operations, guys, but I don't believe in funding with this kind of money, because next year, we're gonna have to do the same difficult decision, so I am very sorry. Those are the only three, I think.
No, Constable Precinct Five.
Constable Precinct Five, oh, that's vacant, yes, uh-huh.
So the motion would be, did the Public Information Officer, the Disaster Recovery Specialist, the Emergency Preparedness Planner, and the Constable Precinct Five School Resource Officer would not be funded?
Yes.
That's the motion.
But end, at the end of their term, whatever's been funded, yes, I guess it goes from our fiscal year to fiscal year, I would assume.
Yes.
Yes, so September thirtieth is their last.
All expire, they're done, on September thirtieth, that this is, okay.
It's around that spot, depending on how our payroll's, it's still, or maybe a little bit, maybe in October, or maybe right before the end of September, so, yeah, it's one of those periods, yes.
And, you know, as I said before, I don't like doing this, I don't, I don't like doing any of this, I'm very sorry that I have to, but I, I just can't, and I think that we have to stop.
So the contingency amount that was allocated for the school resource, can we circle it back to the remaining balance?
If we're voting now, if I get a second, and we have a motion to get, to not continue them, so, yes, so do I have a second?
Yes.
We have a, a motion and a second.
Is it not, because I'm hearing different.
Yes, to not fund.
For, for the next fiscal.
Yes, it doesn't stop them today, no, they end the year, whatever's been allocated to them.
Already been allocated, yeah, she said to not allocate it for next year.
Next fiscal year.
Right, that's what we're doing.
You're stopping now?
No, Teresa, Teresa's right, Teresa's a hundred percent right.
This is to end, at the end, to not reallocate any money, this is when there's, whatever timeframe they were hired under, under temporary funds, we just are not allocating anymore to continue.
To not continue after October the first.
Yes, okay.
October the first.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Are there, I think there's no other business, we skipped, guys, if we did, somebody remind me, are, are there any adjournments in memory?
Yes, Judge, I have a couple.
Thank you.
Want to announce the, the passing of Alfonso Alcardenas, I worked with him for many years, when he worked with the Texas Department of Family Protective Services, he, he spent his career there, he passed away last weekend, he had been in a few years of, in retirement, and, and was taken, so, just my condolences to his family, and his friends, and his work family, he did a lot of good work for this community, and on behalf of victims of abuse and neglect in our area, and so I just wanted to honor him by recognizing him today, and I don't recall, did any of the commissioners mention Rick Sanchez?
I was going to, but go ahead.
Oh, no, no, go ahead, I don't have it.
I was just gonna pull up his obit.
Yeah, go ahead, because I don't have it pulled up, I just wanted to make sure he got recognized, if you have a commissioner, go ahead. You know, Rick was one of the co-founders of the Texas Jazz Festival here in Corpus Christi, he had been in, kind of declining health over the years, but was still active and got around with his wife, Gail, and so, very, is part of this community, and, and so, this October will be special, be the first one without him, so, my condolences